The whole for June thirteenth, has it been appropriately noticed?
Yes, your honor, it has.
Take a roll call, please.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Ellis. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Zwart.
Here.
Alderman Stray.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Rogers. Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Okay, tonight we have a discussion on the RFP and engineering construction management processes. Just a little bit of an opening. What I want to do is I want to make sure that we have our Department of Public Works, we have Stan Sugden and the representatives from Rooker and Milkie here to go over all the information. I want to make sure that we keep this as a cordial meeting. I don't want to have any name calling, I don't want to have anything that's what I deem out of line. I don't think it's necessary, this is a professional group of people here. And I'd like to make sure we try to keep this as civil as possible. I'm going to turn over to Stan Riffel to go over some of the other things that he may have. And then Sarah will talk after that, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
The only concern I have, a city attorney, and I'm here to protect the city, is that there have been some statements made in public relating to, very vague, relating to employees. Under nineteen eighty-five one B of the Wisconsin statutes, if there is any discussion of any particular employee that might be disparaging, they would have the right to insist that the matter go into closed session. And so if you're intent, anybody, any of you aldermen are intent to discuss the job performance of any employee of the city as protection of the city, please refrain from doing so without giving advance notice so that can be done in closed session. I'm only talking about specific employees, okay? Thank you.
Hey, Sarah.
Yep. Okay, so I want to open tonight by thanking everybody for being here. I know it's tough with summer schedules and commitments and things, so thanks for everybody for coming. This is the second night that we're meeting as a committee of the whole to discuss the city's RFP process and engineering services. And, you know, we're looking forward to a candid and productive conversation with all of you tonight. As our city continues to grow and evolve, so do our operations. And we saw some of that when we visited last time about the history. So our goal as staff is to meet the council's expectations and to provide a high level of service for our citizens. And I think our goal as a council and staff team is to work together to find those opportunities, to look and see, is there things that we want to refine or things we want to change in the future to continue to meet the needs of our citizens. Council had asked staff back in two thousand and eighteen, and I think it was during the budget process, to start to take a look at our, these two processes and bring it back for discussion. And then we had talked about, coming back to you and the, you know, starting that process in the first quarter of two thousand and nineteen. The subject came up again towards the end of twenty nineteen, late November, early December, when we were looking at our two thousand and nineteen streets projects and awarding the engineering contract for that project at that time. And so that subject matter came back up again. And then since that time in early December, we've had a series of information requests from a couple of the aldermen. And staff has spent time focusing on gathering and providing that information to the council. So tonight we can talk about that and review it and answer questions. And I think that discussing these past projects helps to provide further insight for us as we look at the future and what we want to do going forward. Last meeting, we kicked off the review process again by looking at the history and evolution of engineering services in the city and our RFP process and evaluation methods. We spent some time walking through the construction process, if you remember, all the way from planning and budgeting, all the way through to award and construction and the nuances and things that happened during that complex process. So, you know, again, I appreciate your time that you spent with us then because I think it's important for everyone to have that same information and understanding of where we started and how it's changed through the years. And that helps us moving forward. So tonight we want to start our conversation by, you know, reviewing the past project years and answering any of your questions. As the mayor said, Mark is here, he can overview each of the years with you. We can take it year by year. Stan and his team is here as a resource as well. So as we know, actual costs for engineering through the years, mainly in our construction management area, have been significantly higher than the original proposals estimates. And we talked about on the twenty-first, some of those general reasons as to why that can occur and impact the cost of a project. We talked about things that can impact that, is that, you know, we're proposing, they're proposing on a project that's not designed. You have field conditions, you have construction challenges and weather conditions. There's a myriad of things. And we all know from doing our own personal projects at our homes and stuff that every project always has its own story and its own challenges and its own nuances. So as we get into discussing the particulars of a specific year and answering your questions, what I want all of us to do is to try to keep in mind what factors impacted that project, what can we learn from it, and think about if there's any opportunity for us to refine our processes going forward. You know, is it process changes, is it communication changes? So keep those things in mind as we talk through it. At the last meeting, I had shared, one of the final slides was just some of the ideas about things we can do moving forward, and that was meant as a starting point. There might be other things that we come up with. And so let's just, when we get through the questions, let's circle back and look at how we want to move forward.
Okay, as Sarah had mentioned, Marcus here from DPW. Stan has a team here, Stan, do you want to introduce who you have and what their roles are?
Sure. Thank you, mayor. I brought with me the engineers and project managers for the projects that we were talking about. I think it was two thousand thirteen through two thousand eighteen, so I wanted to bring them along. So Terry Taverra, Violet Razzo, and Maria Keely. They may not have done all the work in thirteen, that was done by a prior employee that retired. But I think we, they worked on it, so I think we probably have some of the specific questions. So I brought them along so that if we get into a specific year and a specific question about a project, I might, they might be able to answer it. And it's possible we may have to go back and dig through some information to get for you if, depending on the level of detail the question you have is. But I wanted to bring them along, so hopefully we can try to answer those questions, you know, quickly.
Okay, thanks, Stan. Do we want to, do you want to do a presentation first, or we wanted to start with questions?
Can I, I summarized, I did a spreadsheet summarizing the construction, RFPs and the actuals. And for the design, I'd like to pass that out to everybody so they have the summary.
Yeah, pass it out. So Mark, did you have anything you wanted to present first, or we wanted to just go right to questions?
I was actually planning on just giving an overview of the projects by year, starting in two thousand thirteen and working up through two thousand eighteen. And I just assumed that when I got done talking about that project year that we could then open it up to questions regarding.
Can't hear you very well.
Oh. Better?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. That after I got done talking about the project year, we could handle questions then. So starting in two thousand thirteen, we went through the RFP process. There were three firms that had responded to that. We then further reviewed two of them, the final two being Conkle Engineering Group and then also Rooker and Milkie. Conkle had a design of eight hundred and fifty-eight hours at a cost of seventy-two thousand two hundred. And just, you know, I'm just going to round dollar figures tonight, so if it doesn't match something exactly that you're seeing, it's just because I'm just rounding them off. Construction management was one thousand two hundred ninety-eight hours at eighty-seven thousand nine hundred. Rooker and Milkie had a design of five hundred and forty-two hours at fifty-one thousand four hundred. Construction management at one thousand two hundred and eighty-four hours at hundred and nine thousand dollars. The project was awarded to Conkle, they were two hundred and thirty-nine dollars lower in cost. And so the council voted to hire them for the process. Conkle did the design work and was paid eighty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. It was at the end of the design phase of it that we amicably parted ways with Conkle Engineering and completed the new bidding documents and bid out the project later on that year in order to get some work done. The cost for Rooker and Milkie to put together the bidding documents was thirty-two thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Yes, thirty-two thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. The previous information I provided to you, it was a twenty-three thousand dollar number. I had one invoice in the construction management that should have been in design, so those two numbers are going to change a little bit. With the construction management side, Rooker and Milkie's RFP was, as I mentioned, one hundred and eight, one hundred and nine thousand. Earlier information I provided to you said the actual was one hundred and thirty-nine thousand. That should have been one hundred and sixty-nine thousand for a difference of about sixty thousand dollars. The construction administration was estimated for eighteen weeks at one thousand two hundred and eighty-four hours. The construction was October through November of two thousand thirteen and then May through August of two thousand fourteen. Twenty-four weeks, actual hours, one thousand eight hundred and thirty. One of the things that was added after the design but included in the construction bid was resurfacing Redland Road from the tracks to Mark's Road. And another item that was added after the design RFP and was not in the construction bid was the Village Bean parking lot that had a construction cost forty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. The construction that year, the original bid was awarded at one point four five seven million. We had a total of five change orders with the final construction cost of one point four two five million. In looking at the invoices from Rooker and Milkie for their time on the construction management, one of the things in there was the construction review tech, CRT, that was on the project, actually had gone up in cost because the project wasn't awarded to them. And we went to them and asked if, you know, they could do what they could. And that added ninety-five hundred dollars. And then there was also an additional twenty-five thousand for an additional three hundred and thirty-three hours of inspection time on the project. There was a cost for an engineer four position that was an extra fifteen thousand, but we did not use the E-six position, a little bit higher in cost, which had a, was in the RFP as ten thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. So that had a net increase of five thousand changes in fees. This project was supposed to be completed in two thousand thirteen and it ended up going two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen. That added an extra thousand. And then throughout the course of the work, there are people that fill in or have to come in and do a specific task. And I refer to them as other personnel worked on the project, and that was eighteen thousand dollars. That is the lion's share of that sixty thousand dollar difference.
Can I ask a question about that real quick?
Hang on. Are you done now?
Yes, I'm.
Okay, now we'll open up for questions, Matt.
Oh, so the difference between the one thirty-nine, eight thousand summary we got originally, that's what those numbers were just related to, the extra sixty, right?
Yes.
Okay, that makes more sense.
I have a question.
Hey, Derek.
You stated that design and engineering services were, they bid at seventy-two, this is for Conkle in two thousand thirteen. The actual cost when they, at the end of the day, was eighty-two thousand five seventy-nine. I have a, but part of that was to bring them to bid, so, and you just said there's thirty-two thousand that was to bring that design to bid, right?
Right.
And Conkle was paid, of that eighty-two thousand dollars, let's say, sixteen thousand seven fifty was to provide bid documents. There's a memorandum of understanding I have that you provided. So basically, they provided a bid document for sixteen thousand and Rooker and Milkie re-provided it for thirty-two thousand or whatever it took. They redid it, correct?
Yes.
So we paid a total of, I guess, sixteen, forty-eight thousand dollars for the bid document? If you had thirty-two to sixteen, roughly?
Correct.
Seems excessive, I guess, when the original.
Andy, you got something to add to that?
I believe that when we picked up that project, it wasn't that we just took their information and rebid it. We also had to change some of the design work.
Okay.
And then, and then put together the bidding documents. So it wasn't just the bidding documents for an additional, and we weren't, we weren't reusing and could not reuse any of the Conkle information that sixteen thousand you're referring to.
Yep.
So we simply were modifying the design, adding some of the design work, and then providing all new bidding documents. So it wasn't just bidding documents.
Okay. Why did we?
Hold on a second.
So I had just inquired why Conkle was canned, and I'm informed that we have an agreement with them that must be part and parcel of a settlement that was made by the prior city attorney that that can't be discussed.
What can't be discussed?
The reasons behind canning Conkle. We amicably parted ways. That's the official line.
So this document is private that I have?
No, the settlement agreement evidently. You don't have that. I haven't seen it either, so I just was wondering why the hell, you know.
That's what was going to be my question, why did we remove them?
So I would suspect that that agreement can be provided to you all.
In private session or something?
In closed session, but you won't be able to say anything less. And I don't know, I mean, I just asked a question because, obviously, it was an obvious question, right?
Because they did have a contract with us, correct? I saw a contract that wasn't signed that you sent me?
Right.
There was no signatures on that thing?
That was a copy that I had in my file. I didn't go down through the clerk's office to.
And none of the addendums were attached to it either.
I don't need to talk about why we fired Conkle, I don't.
I don't need to either. I don't need to either, but.
Didn't fire them, we amicably parted ways.
Whatever happened with Conkle is not my concern.
It ought to be.
It's part of the concern, but the concern is, what we're talking about tonight is, okay, there are some bid documents, what we're being told is that design and materials within those bid documents had to be redone, which is why we spent forty-eight thousand dollars on bid documents for this two thousand thirteen, fourteen street project. That's what we're talking about, I don't care why they were, why we parted ways.
But, you know, there's, there's.
Okay. You're not debating each other.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying.
I'll call whoever, you know, for discussion purposes so we can get everybody's opinion. Derek, are you done?
I said, the only thing I care about is that we had a contract with them that I haven't seen yet. And I asked for it, and I haven't seen a signed copy with all the addendums, that's all I care about.
Tom?
But I understand it's a sealed document and we have to open it up, but there was some pretty interesting things, the reason why. And I won't bring them up in front of everybody if we're going to have to go to a closed session.
We'll have to go to a closed session for that.
Okay.
Lou?
I appreciate all the, all the numbers and all the facts behind each one of the years and each one of the projects that we're discussing tonight. For me, as we're evaluating this, ultimately, it's a process discussion and how we're, how we conducted business in the past and how we want to see business conducted in the future using these as examples. So I just want to make that clear in regards to how I'm looking at this in the discussion and how we rectify any of the concerns that we may have as a group. I don't, in my, my opinion, based on the knowledge that I have now, and maybe that changes, there is, there's been no violation of process that I see by an individual or by a department that is malicious or has any intent. So I want to make that clear in regards to my, my point of view. But I do strongly agree that the process that we have in place, hopefully we get to that as we are discussing what needs to happen moving forward, not necessarily trying to call out particular instances or projects to hang up on the wall and say, this, this one right here needs to be penalized or whatever. I don't think that's the case. I think we need to make sure those situations are handled differently in the future and have different review process and different oversight by the body as we move forward. That's what I'm looking to get out of this conversation. So it's not, it's not a witch hunt or a search and destroy kind of conversation for me at all. It's purely process and how we move forward. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Right, we still want to get through this and go through the issues with this, with from two thousand thirteen through last year. Kevin?
I too. This has been a process since I was elected as alderman in the fourth district. I know that there's, there's been a, a lot of finger pointing in a sense, or I'm not here for that. I'm here to learn, I'm here to not make those same mistakes. I think that's why the board has changed in so many instances because people don't want to see these mistakes anymore. And going forward, you know, once again, as Lou just stated, this is not a witch hunt for me. I just want to make sure that you all understand that there's, there's got to be things in place here that don't allow this to ever happen again. So I, I guess that's pretty much all I really wanted to say. I just wanted you guys to understand, you know, this is a learning process for me. I've only been on the board now, this is my second term. And I want to thank the mayor for all of the information, and Sarah for that matter, for all the information that you've given me over, well, the last three years, all the history, the back history and things on those lines. I think it's very valuable information. But the little nuances that are happening inside, we need to really put a gatail on it. One of the things that was brought to my attention is that with R and M, let me ask you a question, do we have any written contract with R and M? No.
Can we explain, can we go through the reason why that is? Well, Sarah, you have the information, I think, right?
Yeah, I think, you know, from, back in nineteen ninety-five, R and M was appointed as our city engineer and.
By resolution.
By resolution, so we walked through that at the last meeting. So they went through the RFP process, they were selected as a city engineer at that time. If you recall, there were, what was it, like forty-plus tasks within that scope of services that the city engineer was to provide to the city. And so that was the full gamut, you know, full engineering for public works, utilities, rate studies, a myriad of things. And so through time, as council has visited this subject in the past, those services have changed in scope a little bit. We, you know, we hired our own utility engineer, so some of the engineering that used to be done by our city engineer was pulled in-house. We, two thousand eleven, the council said, you know, when there's large definable projects, let's go out and solicit proposals for that. And so that's probably the types of things that you're talking about now and asking, you know, do we have a contract for these projects that we have went out and went through an RFP process and were awarded to R and M? And there's not, and I can't speak directly to why that wasn't. All I can say is it was probably a function of them being our city engineer and, and that work was defined within that original scope. And at that time, people didn't think to create the contract for that. And it's just not changed since, so.
I guess I have a question for Stan. Since that resolution was put in place in nineteen ninety-five and has never been changed or updated, is it, I mean, we're still following what was put together back in nineteen ninety-five?
I've represented a lot of municipalities for a lot of years. I will first of all say that I have been appointed as city attorney. There is, you know, a placeholder in the statute for a city attorney, there's a placeholder in the statute for a city engineer. I don't have a contract with you, you can hire or fire me anytime you want. You can hire or fire the city engineer anytime you want. It's atypical for a officer of the city to have a contract with the city. I've not seen a city engineer have a contract with the city. Individual, and that's what's confusing here. There, he's here to do, you know, the day-to-day work.
Let's not say him, let's say.
No, it's he, it's he.
But it's R and M.
Yeah.
That's who, that's who the resolution named as R and M.
Okay.
I'm not referring to one individual, I'm referring to R and M.
Okay, let's.
But, you know, there's a designated, you know, you're, I guess, I am your city attorney even though my firm, you know, provides attorney services to you. And I'm not trying to carry water for anybody, I'm just telling you, the way I've seen it is there is no contract for the day-to-day work. And it gets confusing because you also award contracts to the firm for specific projects. And there has been no delineation where that line departs from, what, thirty years ago till now? And so that is an obvious area of confusion, and I understand it. And it probably is something that should be addressed, which is why you're here.
Yeah. My comment to that is, I don't think there's confusion, I think there's an attempt to create confusion. We had never said that we think we need a contract with our city engineer or our city attorney. But if we hired a separate group of attorneys to come in for a specific project to give us, I don't know, study on.
Agreed, right.
Whatever, we would expect a contract. So we were sent a group of contracts, finally, with other professional service providers, engineers, and we have contracts with them because they're doing specific delineated projects. So I don't, I don't agree that there's confusion there. I think we all agree that Stan is a statutory officer essentially, a city engineer. We don't need a contract for him. But on the specific projects, there should have been. Because that led us to the point where we're at now, which is when there's, there's no change orders, there's no delineation of what the actual original amount was in these contracts. And then basically the checkbooks were opened up, and that's what got us to the position we're in now. So I, I think if there was confusion, it was just maybe at some point someone just decided we don't need to do contracts with them because they're also our city engineer. But that leads me to another major point I've wanted to make, which is, and, boy, I mean, I got a lot of notes here. I don't want to go through it all, but I want to comment on that. I don't think there's confusion, they should have had a contract. We contracted with all of our other professional services. There was no reason that they wouldn't have had a contract specifically. So I don't understand why that would have been a confusion. We were always doing it, we did it with Conkle. And then we hire Rooker and Milkie to take over, and I don't think this is on Rooker and Milkie necessarily, we should have had them write a contract. Our, you know, all these guys did, Stan Tech, Strand, R.A. Smith, we did contracts with them. So, you know, and it's because it's a delineated project, that to me would seem to be the norm. So I don't think there was confusion, and I think right now what we've got is a situation, and I think our city engineer does a good job. I'm actually not critical of our city engineering work. What I'm critical of is why we over, not necessarily overpaid, but had this overrun throughout these years. And there was no way for us to track it, there was no way for us to know it until we get these documents and we find out these are significant overages. We also now understand as of tonight, and we only got to thirteen, so we're going to be here for a while, that that year construction management was over sixty percent above what was estimated after a lot of the original design work and materials were done. So that, those are problems. And I think we will be correcting that in the future because we're going to have contracts, I'm assuming, for professional work in the future. I mean, I think that's one of our goals tonight, is that.
And that's one of the things we're going to come up with, yeah.
Yeah, whether it's Rooker and Milkie or it's R.A. Smith or anyone, we don't care who they are, they need to have a contract with us. And just as a little side note, there are fixed, or what is it, cost?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed contracts here.
Not all of them are, some of them are.
Some of them are, some of them are like lump sum estimates, and then if they go above, they're going to let us know and they'll do a change order. Some of them actually say in them, we'll submit a change order to you if we're going to go over. So that's what we need, because that'll stop this from happening.
I'd like to.
Are you done, Matt?
Yeah. That was my point on that issue.
I think part of the reason we're here tonight is because we asked for the numbers, for the, what the actual numbers were compared to the RFPs. That spawned some meetings with you guys. And in those meetings.
And in those meetings, after a couple of months of getting this stuff, it took a couple of months to get the original information back. And I was concerned as to why it took so long. And in our meeting, it was, it was, I was told that our accounting software wasn't set up to track that, correct?
It's not set up for project accounting. It's really object code. So it's, you know, storm sewers separate from street construction, separate from services overall. So it's not, it's not a project accounting system.
So it doesn't keep track of any projects that we have?
It keeps track of things by account number, not by project. So it's all tracked within the system, but it's not under the neat and tidy umbrella of this is the project.
And it wasn't able to do, our, our software's not capable of keeping track of projects? I, I'm just curious as to why we weren't tracking it.
We, well, we're in the process now of converting our accounting system. So that's an element that we're looking at with the new software is how do we better do that? The old software had, it had some fields and things you could do. It was not, it's, it was not set up for project management accounting. They had a whole separate module and things for that, which the city didn't have.
Okay, so anybody who did a project, we wouldn't necessarily be able to track what the expenses were?
It's a, it's a main, it
Okay, manual process, whatever.
Manual, yeah.
So
I think I've got a couple. But can I keep going and then Lou's after you?
Okay. So then during that meeting, I was told that, you know, as long as we, the whole project came in under budget, we were okay. If we had a budget for our street projects of say $1.5 million and that included construction and project management, we were okay with that. So, and we were always within our budget or within our budget numbers. But, so you're telling me that those overruns were kept track of from a total, a total project number? I mean, I gotta know how you'd know if you had $100,000 and over in construction management that you didn't know that that, I'm not, I, I'm wondering how you can, I don't know how to say this. You, you cannot account for that, those dollars and still say that you're under budget. Because you said we weren't keep, we couldn't keep track of that project. Is that, you understand where I'm coming from? Like, how do you know you're under budget if you're not keeping track of that extra money? Does that make sense?
Okay.
I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so within the system, there's the separate account, again, without you seeing the system and understanding how it's set up. So there's separate account numbers for, I'm going to say objects, okay? And there's a budget associated with that.
Okay.
And like for street projects, the budget might be in all in one line, but it's separated into multiple lines. So the actual costs, because of coding requirements we needed to do for state reporting. So we have to report storm sewer separate from street construction and things for things we need to do with the state. So that's why it's set up the way it is. It was to, to have that available for those state reports at the end. That's why we're looking at trying to change that moving forward. We have a more sophisticated system that we're implementing now, so that should help us moving forward. So I, I'm hearing you guys
That's good enough, what I'm saying is, that's very important. You should always, you should always know if your project is over budget.
Yeah, and departments track that, you know, and they, they were tasked with that management of the projects.
Okay, even if our accounting software can't keep track of it, we should do it in a spreadsheet, is all I'm saying. Okay, I'm, I'm done with that portion of it. Now, the next thing I heard when I was in that meeting, I asked, because we were over the RFPs by so much, I asked to see the contracts. And that's when it came forward that we don't have contracts for these specific projects. I think in the future, we should always have contracts for specific projects. And that's just my point.
Go on, that's the same thing Matt said.
I'm just repeating it because we wouldn't have known about it had we not brought this up in our private session. I want everybody else to know what we talked about.
Sure.
So.
Okay, Lou?
So just for a quick review as we're talking about accounting methodologies, job cost accounting methodologies generally apply to not to exceed or fixed bid type projects, which I don't believe was in place for our services because they technically weren't contracts that we were keeping track of that way, right? The other methodology for the accounting application would be line item accounting, which is basically just tracking your actuals, which I believe is the way that you described the way our setup is. And either a not to exceed or fixed bid type accounting methodology and job costing is where we're kind of going toward. So we have a greater ability to dig into change orders, overages, things of that nature. Right now, it's just actual reporting for the state, is that correct?
Yeah, the actuals are recorded, obviously, in the system. And again, the there, it, yeah, you're right, there's not the job cost detail that you're referring to within the budget that way. You know, it's an overall amount for streets in this example, and all of these costs fall under that. The, the the other thing I wanted to just to make a point there is for the proposals, for the design and the construction management, those weren't, you know, they weren't viewed as fixed cost proposals. They were viewed as estimates and then actual costs were recorded through time for work that was actually performed. So so everything was being recorded. The, the, again, the proposal was not fixed cost, it was
Type of material.
It was, yeah, yeah, exactly. Here's the estimate and we'll charge you for what we're actually out there and working and doing.
And time and material. And time and material type agreement awards, basically, just provide a guideline for, for scope. So they have something to refer to. But there is no, there's no cap, there's no umbrella necessarily that says you're going to spend only $80,000 until we get a change order if you need 85. It is what it is and that's how we've been operating. And I think that's one of the, the things that we are looking to change in regards to that process. So as, as we're, as we're discussing that, I just wanted to make sure that we understood that the accounting methodology was one of the drivers for how we were tracking cost and overruns. Let me take that back, it's not overrun, tracking actual time and actual cost.
Estimates versus actuals. Tom, you had your hand up.
That was a while ago, I think I forgot right there. Sarah, how many years you been here in the treasury department there?
I've been with the city, it'll be 18 years this year.
Okay, back 18 years ago, what methodology were you using for, I mean, wasn't it spreadsheets and, and ledgers and things like that? Somebody back in the days, it was working.
Shipping tools.
Abacus.
It was working, right? Now, all of a sudden, we don't have the software or whatever to keep track of it.
When I started, the city had, they had always been with the same accounting software. They had made the decision to upgrade to the newer version of that right before I started. And so all of that structure was in place. And we've used that same system, you know, through the years. It's been upgraded with various versions and things. But it was not spreadsheets and manual.
10 years before you guys.
I'm not that old.
Okay, Derek?
You know, we talked about the process where it was an estimate of cost.
Yeah.
RFPs, we selected firms based on the estimates, I guess. And we were never, the problem I have is that we never knew that they were over the estimates. And we, we, the problem is we, we select firms based on, sometimes it's, it's the complete score, but 25% is generally for the cost, correct? On these
20.
20?
Mm-hmm.
So cost is, is a factor, but if the true cost is something different, I, I just want to know about it. That's my point. I'm not trying to say what happened was wrong. I just say in the future, we need to know, we need to be tracking things better. And I think what we talked about before of doing the design first, we'll get better. We, we should get more solid estimates on the construction. Because, because the construction numbers seem to come in almost under more often than over. So when, when the design's done, the construction firms know how long, what they got to do based on quantities. But from what you're telling me, the construction management piece is tough to do before the design's done. So what we talked about before, I think, is a great idea. And it will help get better estimates. I think we should have not to exceed contracts once we have design. That's all I need to say for now.
Yeah. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, there's a couple of penultimate questions hanging over this discussion right now, which is, if we weren't really, my understanding is we weren't really able to track the, the overages or whatever we wanted to style them as in construction management and design work. Because we weren't really tracking that in our software. But Sarah, what I heard you say is that the department heads were tracking the projects, correct? They should be tracking the projects, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the departments would have all of the information on the actual costs where, where the, you know, proposals came in, et cetera.
So the penultimate question then is when I'm looking at the spreadsheet that Derek provided, and you're seeing construction management variances of 60%, 119, 162%. At what point does that, did we know what it was going over? Or did we just not know it was going over and just paid the bills because the whole overall construction project was still under whatever our stated budget number was? Were we just ignoring that they were going over the estimate by that much? Or were, were we actively just not looking at it?
I think, you know, and I don't want to speak for
I'm not asking about, I, I want to be clear, I'm not asking about any specific person. I'm saying we as a city, whether it's comptrollers, whether it's department heads, whoever, whoever's looking at these numbers when they're coming in and bills are getting paid, were we aware that they were going over? Or were we just not aware they were going over?
I would say that there was an awareness that the, the construction management was more than original. I mean, in a lot of cases, you award, the council awarded additional construction work. The, you know, managers are aware when field conditions vary, when weather delays the construction project, a contractor, you know, takes a longer time. So they, they are aware of that. So they would know that, you know, the conditions are such that, you know, it's, it's greater than what was anticipated originally. But the project was awarded again based on, or the, the service was awarded based on, this is what we need to do. We need to, we're going to build these streets and we're going to do this infrastructure and we need you out there and watching this while it's happening and whatever it takes to do that, however long it is, whatever conditions are there.
So I, I get that. I, I get that there could be periods of times where conditions change, right? We, we uncover a sanitary line from some abandoned place we never knew about. We got to dig it out, we got to redesign the street. I get that. But just the law of averages would tell you that year after year, the estimates aren't even close. So are you telling me that year after year, are these projects were so messed up year after year that we had to have double or triple the amount of workman and hours on these sites? I mean, that's what you're telling me essentially is what I'm hearing, is that we just needed the work done.
That's not what I'm saying, Matt. I don't appreciate words being put in.
No, whoa, 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 hold on. The mayor said we should be cordial. I'm not putting words in your mouth. Don't, don't accuse me of that.
Yeah.
I'm asking the questions, I'm trying to get to the bottom. I'm looking at these numbers. I'm seeing in 2015, okay, I see a 162% construction management variance. So my question is, did we know it was going over? And are every year that these are over, is it just, it rained more in spring? I, I don't, I can't buy that.
I think you almost have to go by each one of them individually.
I thought that's how we started out, that our person, our head person to deal with this was going to go through year to year.
We were trying to get done with 13, but we'll take one more comment and then if we could go year by year, that would be best.
I'm fine going year by year. We can go year by year.
Yeah, I think it just works easier because then we get that one out of the way.
I mean, there's overall points to be made though, whether it's 13, 15, 17, it's the same points.
Yeah.
It's the same points.
I think there's different explanations for each year. Go ahead, Charlie.
The, the construction management RFP is an estimate. The construction management actual is based on whatever the projects actually entail. Now, in this 2013, we just heard that there were extra projects added, the resurfacing of Redland Road, the Village Green parking lot, things like that, that, that were nowhere near, they weren't even thought of when the estimate came out. So of course the number is going to be higher. And I think that's what you're going to find as you go through these years, that the projects themselves changed.
So there, there's a point there though, Charlie. If the projects changed significantly, number one, why wasn't council told? Why weren't we told that was going on? And I, I, hold on, I disagree with that point because when you actually look at the construction numbers, okay, the, that year for 13, for instance, only went up $30,000 in actual construction numbers of hard construction. But yet the actual man-hours to do the construction management was an extra 600. So it's not even, this isn't like we added 15 new streets. You know, we did a resurfacing project, we repaved a road. I, I, I'm, I'm struggling to see why that would be an increase of $100,000. That's a big chunk.
Okay, Kevin?
I, I guess my, my question would be, when the RFP was exceeded, now back in 13, I was nowhere to be found, 14, 15, I was nowhere to be found. Was council made aware of that? When the RFPs were exceeded, regardless of the year, regardless of how much more was added to the project, did it come back in front? Was there an email stating, hey, guys, there's five or six more things that are concerned with this project and we need to add them on and this is what the potential cost is going to be? Or was it more, well, you've got the project, just deal with it, we'll cut the check?
Go ahead.
I think there's, there's two different elements to that. The construction project itself, so if you, if you think back to when we talked through the process, the design and the construction management RFP go out before we, before we're awarding the contract, right? So that's going out in end of year. Then we, let's say we go forward and we, we, we have the final design, we let the bid for the actual construction piece of it, and then the bids come back in favorably. The council may decide to award additional construction, more streets because the bids came in favorably for construction. So the council would be aware of things like that. What may not have been explicitly understood by the council is that there is additional construction management now that you've added more projects to the construction contract itself. And so that's an area where, again, I think in the future, we can be clearer that, hey, guys, you know, bids came in great. We can add this, like we did in 18, we added almost a million dollars in streets. There's an impact not only to the construction cost, but, you know, you can expect that inspection services is going to be higher too. And I think that's a communication piece where maybe to staff it was inherent that that was part of it. But maybe council wasn't aware that, you know, there's also an impact to the, the construction management piece. So I think that's another thing that I had written down, that we can be better communicator, better communicators at, in the future, so.
Yeah, and, and I think that was, was one of the, it's maybe not so much the one year, but whenever there is additional components added to the actual construction bid, you have to assume there's going to be some more construction management. And I, I agree with Sarah, I don't think that was passed on to the council as much in the fact that you're going to add $500,000 worth of work. You're going to have to add a certain percentage amount as construction management. And that's where a lot of these overages are because they're doing more work. It's not overages, but it's additional work. Go ahead, you have more?
So if I understand properly, what had transpired in back in 13, 14, 15 was a lack of communication between council and staff? Is that what I hear when it comes to?
I would say that's probably somewhat accurate.
Yeah, I don't think there was, you know, the expectation or it was never asked of staff to provide back a recap of projects at the end. So I think that, again, if that's something, you know, we want to make sure we're meeting your expectations going forward. If that's something you want to see happen in the future, we can certainly do that. So that's another point I had written down through our discussions is, you know, do we want to do, you know, some kind of a recap back at the end?
The, the, the other thing I want to ask, and I guess I'm asking the attorney at this point, is can we make a motion?
No, there's no motion, it's tonight.
Let me finish.
We're just doing discussion.
Let me finish, I know this is only a discussion, but, and I understand that nothing can take place tonight. This is only a discussion between us all. Can we make a motion at some point in time that all companies that do Can we make a motion at some point in time that all companies that do business with this city have to be under contract? Can we take that 1995, whatever you guys did back then on that tablet, and just rip it up and then put something in force so this does not happen again?
Before I answer that question, I have to define for all of you the term penultimate. It means next to ultimate.
Did that, I did a penultimate question, then the ultimate question.
I didn't hear the ultimate one. I'm just having fun here, okay? The answer to your question, Kevin, is yes.
Thank you.
You'd have to rescind the resolution or redo a resolution, do a new one.
No, in the future, you can require all public bidding of any nature to require a formal contract. You could require a formal contract of me, if you'd like.
Do you have to override the resolution that was already, that's already out there?
No. Because a resolution is as long as the next resolution, it's not a law.
As long as you make, it's not an ordinance, you're saying?
It's not an ordinance, right.
Lou.
So to the communication gap, I have two things. To the communication gap, typically, I have found in the short time I've been here, staff has been good about communicating when the flags go up. But there's no flag that went up because there's no contract. So everything was time and material, so you didn't, you didn't have to come to council to say, you know, here's where things were. I don't think it was, my belief that it was an intent that drove that, it was just, again, process. There was nothing that, that forced that communication back to council. Whereas if it was a not to exceed and no work could, could move forward without authorization, that would have been a different story. But it's basically a time and material agreement with no, no ceiling is what has been in place. So I, I strongly agree that what I'd like to see moving out of this discussion is a not to exceed for all contracts and services, and that services are inclusive of our contract desires, that our QBS process be inclusive of past performance and pricing. Because right now, I believe we have a part of our process and evaluation for contracts or agreements has been this weighted approach for pricing, qualification, all the other. But it varies based on, on department and department heads, based on the type of product and services that they procure, correct? There's not a uniform set of questions.
Right, there's some general.
There's some general guidelines.
Guidelines, yeah.
But nowhere in there is there a part of that evaluation, did you go, did you go over in previous contracts with the city? If so, were they justified or non-justified? That project may have ended up great and they could skip over what the financial impact was, but hopefully if we have a not to exceed format and we have documentation as required in order to, to move past a ceiling, that won't be a gray area to begin with. So that QBS needs to be fine tuned. And then, for me, there's going to be a need to look at just conflict of interest between staff positions, in-house or contracted, and the organizations that they work for and how they work with the city. And I'm not saying that because I, I believe that there is any, anything wrong that you've done in the past, at all. And it doesn't need to be you, it could be anybody associated with a staff position that represents a firm that then can do work with the city. There's a potential, in my opinion, from a public standpoint, that if ABC Company is representing the city and ABC Company is performing work for the city, that that oversight is not necessarily clearly delineated. So it's a protection for everybody, in my opinion. And then, one of the things that Sarah and you brought forth in the last meeting is the timeline and how we address these projects from a design element and then actual construction and when we can go out to bid for, for pricing. Those are the things that I really like to see come out of this discussion as I've gathered information over the last several months. And I think those, those items in regards to process need to be addressed. And if they're, if they're not addressed, I, I don't think that we've done our job. There may be additional items that, that members of the council want to add to that, but those are the big ones that I see right now.
Okay. Do you want to go through more of these years or do we have any questions yet into 2013? I mean, if that's the format we're going to take.
I've got a few last questions on 2013, just very briefly. My understanding is we added, looks like the Village Green parking lot, the 42,785, right, Mark?
Correct.
And then you also, it's not on the, the documents submitted, but I think you said Redline Road was repaved?
Yes.
How much did that cost?
Forty thousand five hundred.
How much?
Forty, forty thousand five hundred.
That was just a repave?
Yes.
Okay. So in 2013, just to be clear, it looks like two projects were added. There was a closeout change order that actually reduced amount of bid quantities used by 177,000, but we added these other two projects in. With, with all that being said, in this case, our design is still up, but the design is funky because we got Kunkel for half of it and then Rooker Milky. So I, I kind of throw out the design stuff, even though I think design for that year was high overall at 106,000. That year, construction management went up almost 600 hours for what is essentially two repave jobs. And that's, that is where, in the problems I see with 13. And, I mean, does that make sense? I mean, do we think we need an extra 600 hours for two repave jobs? That's a lot of time, I mean, 40 hours a week for a whole year is 1,800 hours. We have 1,800 hours, so we literally have a construction manager out here, 40, 40 hours a week, five days a week, for the entire year, walking around sites. I mean, that's a lot of time. I mean, when you, when you actually figure that out, that's a lot of time.
You have quite a few individuals that are involved with the projects, and so it's more than the, the construction review tech. But, you know, to, to get back to your original question about the timing, you know, one of the things, and it's a pattern that shows up through here and, and we have discussed it, is comes down to the timing of when they provide that number, when the design's done, and what's the actual project. So on a lot of these, the numbers that they provide us, and if you look at, I think there's three years out of the five that are in here, where there were other firms that their envelopes were open and we had looked at their numbers and, and each of those three years, they were very comparable between the two firms. So it wasn't, I believe, the situation of a firm intentionally undercutting their number. So, you know, that, that shows through there. But the other thing that, you know, look at it is that once the project's designed, you know, we sit down with the engineers and, you know, and city staff and Joe Picker with his utilities and Kevin, you know, with the wastewater, we're involved with the process, process from day one. You know, we meet with them, we talk about what we think's going to go on with the streets. But moving a little bit quicker, quicker here through the process, we, we determine what we look for milestones. You know, when do we think the project's going to start? You know, when will the bids hit the street? When can we beat the council and have it approved? And then we look at how much time we think we need to give the contractor. And in a lot of the cases, when you look at the summaries that have come through, the actual number of weeks that were on the project were very close to what the project took. But that wasn't the number that was submitted back here at the RFP process. So it wasn't like we, we made a lot of changes that added a lot of work, with the exception of this year. You know, there were some, some things added, but, but not, you know, I agree with your point, if you're looking at it that, hey, we only added $80,000 worth of work in paving two streets, why did it take 600 hours? Well, you know, I, I think if, if we would have had the design done and everybody was looking at it, I think those numbers come in a whole lot closer, which is, you know, one of the resolutions, and Derek has brought that up, you know, getting it designed, you know, working with the design engineers and looking at what we're looking at for milestones. One of the things that was mentioned that, quite frankly, once you have a design, you can reach out to a contractor and say, how long to build this? You know, let them look at it. You know, contractors always have their comments about engineers and engineers have their comments, but that's the, where you can get a more accurate number. One of the things that, you know, we tried to do internally was providing the number of hours for the construction management, because we had seen that these numbers are coming in low. And so we took it upon ourselves and in 2018, we actually assigned how many hours we go to the project. Well, 2018, which would have been a great year, our costs came in low, we added a lot of work, almost $900,000 worth of work to the project. So, once again, that, that bumped up hours.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you, Mark, because when I look at, 13 again is an anomaly with regard to the design because of Kunkel leaving, or however that played out. 18 is also an anomaly within just this packet because we added about a million dollars, although then we, we, there was 300 pulled off at the end for underages or whatever. So I, I guess my, my more overall point is, you think that 600 hours was necessary extra for that bit of extra work in 2013?
I know that's how much time it took to do the project. That's what I know.
And how do we know that?
That's what it added up to.
That was the construction side of it?
Construction management I'm talking about.
Yeah, but the construction side of it took that long?
Yes.
So the construction side took that long, so the management side took as long as the construction side did.
And as I mentioned, a lot of times if you looked at, you know, what we had for the milestones in, in the project years and what goes out in the bid, we gave them that much time.
Okay, Stan has a comment?
I just have one point to, to add. At the time, the, the estimate was put in at the RFP, it was estimated that the project would take about 18 weeks for construction, and then when it actually happened, it took about 24 weeks. And then what we also don't know is, sometimes the contractor puts an additional crew on or there might be, and so our staff would be, you know, talking with city staff and saying, do you need to have somebody out there watching this project or that project? So it wasn't just simply that this little, this small increment of work was added, it was also that the project took, you know, an additional, I took my notes here, it went from 18 weeks to 24 weeks. So there's additional six weeks of time that that project went on that wasn't included and wasn't added at the very beginning. Again, before the project was designed, it was a, it was a concept at that time. So I just want to make that, add that.
No, I appreciate that point. But to that point, so if it goes an extra six weeks, I get that. If we, if we had literally a person on for 40 hours a week, so full-time, during all the construction, 40 hours a week times six weeks, that's 240 extra hours. Let's multiply, let's say we need 80 hours a week, that's 480. We're still, seems to me, and again, I don't, you know, I don't do construction management, so I'm speaking as a layman to this, looking at these numbers and saying, we, we could have had hired our own guy to do all that work for that amount of time and done other projects in the meantime. Or figure out why we're still significantly over. I mean, did we have three people working full-time, those extra six weeks to make up the extra 600, you know, 600 hours?
Well, through the course of a project, as Stan was saying, the, the contractors drive part of it, you know, with how many crews they put on, some of it that also drives is that we've been taking projects and splitting them up with the, lately with the, the additional accelerated streets that we've been doing in subdivisions. So now you're bringing in another contractor because that's a sub. So, but, you know, there'll generally be, you know, six, eight, possibly 10 people working on a project. Now, they're not all there eight hours a day, the five days a week, but, you know, you get three people involved with the survey crew, you get the project manager, you get people looking at erosion control when situations come up. And when you look at the change orders that we have involved, that might involve some other people when we go to look at that, any drafting work that takes place there. So there's a lot of different individuals over the course of a project that put their time in on that. We might have three inspectors on a project at the same time.
All day?
Yes.
They might be at three different places too, right?
Correct.
Matt, can I have Lou?
Yeah, that was it for now.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mark, real quick. If for some reason in the, in the series of questions that we are providing, determine that, using this example, that six hours would be kind of excessive and maybe it should be 580 hours, we can't recover 20 hours worth of billing from six years ago, right? I mean, and, and to be able to even...
Actually, five years you could.
Okay.
I'm not looking to do that.
Sure.
He just, Matt just has questions and I think they're legitimate questions about what the overages are.
Totally legit, I, I'm just, I'm just, and it's a great point, because it gets into the weeds of why the process needs to, to evolve and, and to, to change, in my opinion. It's just, I want to stay with that, that framework that I think everybody is, is trying to get to and how we move forward and not having that happen again.
Yeah, I agree. Can I, I want someone else.
Derek, you go first. Yeah, I, I'm, we're going to go through all these years eventually, and I'm not necessarily, I'm, I'm sure there's reasons why all these numbers were, were larger than the RFPs were by significant amounts. The point I'd like to make is that the total dollars we're spending on engineering, contracting for engineering services is getting close to a million dollars a year on average. I believe over the last five years, it was like 882,000 or something when, I think it was, you gave us the number, it was like 4.4 million over, over five years. So what I'm saying is, these numbers are so significant that I like part of this discussion to get to is how we do business. And maybe it's time that we consider having our own engineer and hiring interns to do some of this work during the summer. Another point I'd like to make, I asked, I sent an email about it, is there are other ways that we can help offset some of our costs. And I sent, are you familiar with the Surface Transportation Program?
Actually, yeah, and I apologize, I hadn't gotten back to you because I reached out to a sewer pack.
Okay, well, I did some research on it over the last few days. We haven't applied for this. We haven't used it or applied for it at least since 2014, is that correct? When they did the Armour Road to...
Right, that was the 1.3 million.
Connected when they, it was for that.
Yes.
This is something that is so big, it was brought up to me by one of our engineers because of Thackeray Trail RFP that went out. She said, did you guys apply for STP for that? She goes, because it's ripe for that kind of money. It's called Surface Transportation Program, and the state will fund up to 80% of the cost for everything, from what I'm told. And it's something that we should consider. On a $2 million project, if we can get 80% or even 75%, that's 1.5 million dollars, serious money for big projects, and that's what it's there for. It's for huge projects and what I understand is that the firms that, the cities, when we bid on, when we ask for these things, our city engineers firm can't design it. Is that correct?
I know when we had the, the last one we did, the 1.3 million, Rooker Milky did do the design.
That was approved by the DOT.
It was, okay. But can you do the construction management for it too?
I don't believe we did the construction management for that project.
Okay.
It, it falls under a DOT project then.
Well, they told, I, I called the guy, because I wanted to make sure, he said that you're, the firm that's the engineer of record can't do the design work. Maybe that's a new rule or something?
That could be.
But that's what I was told by Jake Barnes. And if that's the case, we should, if, we should be doing, we should be looking for these types of things to, if it's that significant a money, it's even bigger than all this if we're losing out on that stuff. So if we haven't, there's the packet, we can still put stuff in until October 15th, that's the deadline, but we should be applying for this stuff all the time and I don't think we are, we are. So that's part of my concern.
So up until last year, and that's why, you know, I reached out to sewer pack, because, you know, when I first started in this position, I wasn't, you know, fully aware of how that was handled, but the City of Economica, Milwaukee County is part of, was called the urbanized Milwaukee area. And so any of the dollars that were being awarded to this area, you know, through this STP fund, they were taking and allocating, and I'll just say, you know, a paper dollar amount for every, all the communities based on lane miles of street. When we went in, in, for that project for Summit Avenue, and I believe at that time, you, you had to be looking at an arterial, which, you know, Thackeray Trail isn't because it doesn't go anywhere.
But it, it could be. I mean, that's what we're talking about, is making an arterial road out of it. I mean, it's, it's a lot of money that we're potentially leaving on the table. And that's, that's why, it's part of the RF, we got to know how that works so we can be smart about our RFP process and how we bid these things.
So, so in that process, we had enough money built up finally, and, and that's when we put in, you know, for the Summit Avenue project. Their process changed in August of 18. I just didn't get a chance to read the 82-page memo that they'd sent me on it, you know, when I asked about, I asked what our balance... I just didn't get a chance to read the 82-page memo that they'd sent me on it, you know, when I asked about, I asked what our balance was. Because I believe that they were still following that same process and they have recently changed that. So, we need to look at that. I, you know, we do look for, you know, grant opportunities when we can.
Well, we need to on this one, because I was told by the guy that we are eligible for stuff like that. And if we're not applying for it, we're not trying hard enough.
Let's finish with where we're at. That's a good point. I think it's something we have to look forward in the future, but we want to try to get through these numbers.
We're talking about the RFP process. And this may preclude certain firms from doing the RFP.
And you're right, but let's-
I understand, I just want, I just want you guys to understand, there's a lot of money here.
The first part was to go through these years. And if we have specific years we want to go through and specific questions, let's get that out of the way. And then, because I think we have to finish this first before we move on.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if everybody agrees with that, but I think it's something that we have to just get this out of the way and then we move on to the next part, which is the important part. It's all important, but the more important part of figuring out how we're going to do this in the future.
So, I mean, I'm game for 14. Let's move to 14.
Hang on, Lou's got a question.
Is the, is the cost associated with the city engineer's position inclusive in any of these numbers? That's separate, right? So-
That's separate.
And does, does that payment go to Rooker Milkie or does that go to Stan Sogd?
Just to Rooker Milkie.
Okay, and then, okay.
So, does anybody else have any questions on 2013? No questions on 13? Okay, we're going to 2014. You have 2014 and 2014 Phase 2, so I'll just turn it over to you.
So, in 2014, we were still in the, trying to catch up with the issues that we had that started in 2013 when we didn't get out to bid till later in the year. We pulled a lot of projects out because we knew that there was no way we were going to get them constructed. And so, 2014 Phase 1 Streets, we had streets that we knew that we were just going to pulverize and overlay, so there was, you know, no design work there. We also had projects that had been in the works, you know, Roebuck Drive, there's a lot of things dealing with the State Trunk Highway 67 project that was coming up. And the Village Green, so projects like that. So, we put them out right away and got that part going so that we could get work started. And then we did the RFP for the, for the work, for the streets that needed to be designed and some of the other work there. One of the things that we attempted to do back then was, as part of the process, our RFP included the 2014 Phase 2 Design and Construction Management. But then we also included projects for 2015 in that same RFP. And we received numbers for doing the design work in 2015. There was a couple other projects on there doing with stormwater modeling and generator here at the City Hall. Unfortunately, that year, we only got one, one proposal submitted to us. And the council at that time was not comfortable awarding multiple years when there was only a single proposal received. So, we, you know, we just didn't move forward with the 2015 part. So, 2014, the design was, you know, 68.6, the actual was 75.5. There is one invoice that's labeled as out of scope work for $4,500. That was Pabst Farms Boulevard Trees, Cherry Street Storm Sewer, Legends Point Forest Main Relay. So, when you add that in, that brings up the design RFP to 73,100. So, just a couple thousand dollars short of, you know, what the actual cost was. Construction management, you know, and this is the pattern that we're going to see. The RFP was 88,000 and the actual was 194. Administration was estimated 13 weeks. Construction was 20 weeks with the closeout actually taking place in 2015 with about an extra 1,000 hours. And once again, RFP here, construction here. In that number, when I went back through all the invoicing, I had inadvertently included $5,400 for Giles Engineering. That was actually one of the Phase 1 projects, Locust Street. Lou may remember when we ran into the contamination at the end of the street when we were doing our storm scepter down there. So, that should not have been included in here with the, at the time on the project, the project manager had an extra $10,000. We added a second engineering tech for construction review. And there was additional hours with the construction review people already, and that totaled 46,000. Added survey cost was 18,000. Towards the end of the project, the project manager had moved out of state and we brought in, actually it was Terry Traver who's here tonight, who was a higher-rated engineer. And he had put in 30 hours at $20 an hour extra for $600. The other personnel on the project was $13,000. So, when you look at that, that's about $101,000 in the adjustment. Project was bid at 1.1 and came in at 1.4. There was a couple things in the different change orders that, when I went back through and saw that anything that had to do with Eastman's Alley and Locust Street, those were actually projects that were in Phase 1 that we were doing a little bit of cleanup in Phase 2. It wasn't a lot of money. The other thing was the library parking lot. That was included in the bid but not awarded. And during that time, we were going through different design options and phases with the parking lot that's right across the street from the community center. You may recall that we built a very, very nice parking lot and about two years later, we went, tore it all out and built another one. So, one of the things that we did do that year was we got the storm sewer in and did some grading and some access work for the library. So, that's the 2014 Phase 2 projects. Oh, I'm sorry. Soon you forget all the fun that we had on these. So, 2014 was the year that the Worthington Apartments were under construction. So, the Wisconsin Avenue project that we had that constructed the median that's down there by the community center and doing that work, we didn't get in till very late because of the fact that the construction of that building had the, half the street blocked off. So, we weren't able to shift traffic over in order to do that construction. We ended up having to pull more concrete. We were hoping we were just going to trench patch. We ended up doing complete panel replacements. But that was the year that there was a huge concrete shortage. And concrete contractors were only getting a small allocation. And we also had Sherman Avenue all tore up, you know, for the full length of that street up on the north end. And we hit November, and I think it was about zero on November 1. I, it was cold. And, you know, our big concern, I always say that, you know, any work you're able to do after November 1 is gravy on the potatoes because you should be paid by November 1 if you can. You're just not guaranteed having the weather and the crews. And everybody's projects, you know, they get stretched out, stretched out, and everybody wants to pay in November. So, we always try to get done in advance of that. And so, because we couldn't put the curb in, you know, normal process is, is your curb goes in first, then you binder, then you surface, and all that follows your curb line. We weren't able to do that because they couldn't get concrete. So, we bindered the street, we put everybody's driveways back in, we did it in binder and let it set through the winter. And we only did that so we could plow them. And then we came back in the spring and tore out some of the asphalt and had to do that. So, that did add a lot of extra time, you know, to that project, so.
Okay, so running over these numbers a little bit more carefully, and I appreciate that presentation. When, when we're looking at these packets you gave us, that's what I'm going off of. When you say construction administration, that is construction management. Is that, are they synonymous?
Yes.
Okay. So, when, so somebody estimated this at 13 weeks. It really took 20 weeks, right, the way I'm reading that?
Correct.
Okay. Who, who told us that they thought it was going to take 13 weeks? Is that, is that our design engineer? Is that?
That was the, the hours in the proposal received. So, up until 2018, we, the comment was in there was that, you know, we look to them to provide, you know, use your experience and provide us the hours that you think this project will take.
Right.
So, we weren't assigning hours at that time.
Now, we're, now the goal is to try to at least, from the city perspective, spitball hours so that we, we have a little bit more concentration of where they should be at.
Correct. And, and also to make sure that there's a fair comparison. Like I said, you know, we've had three years where there was, you know, two sets of numbers that we're looking at, they were very, very comparable. But at what point in time did that not happen? You know, when do you have someone that comes in way up here, when they look at the project, another person comes in down here? Because once, once the firms know that cost is part of our process, those are the things that they looked at. So, the design side, you know, we stayed away from that because I'm not a design engineer. But we did look at the construction management in order to try and keep that more comparable.
So, every year that we have the construction management numbers increase, and we'll eventually get to the big boy, which is the 162%. This, the estimate is coming from the RFP process and the design engineers that we're hiring to do that estimate. And then the estimates are obviously off, I mean, year after year. You'd agree with that?
Yes.
For, for whatever reason, we're, we, apparently through that process, we're not getting close. Do we feel that in 2018 with the change of telling them, "Here's how long we think this should take," that we're getting closer? Because I heard that in 18 here, we're already over $100,000 overage as well.
We, we probably stood a good chance until we added all the work.
And I know 18 again is a little slightly different because of all the work we did add. It's a little different. It's harder to judge and compare the apples to oranges. One of the things we got in the letter from Mr. Sugden was that, is at the end of paragraph 3, that we opened up RFPs and similar time and price estimates following the guidelines of the city. More often than not, my recollection, at least the years I've been here, and I don't know what it goes back before 2000, really, I think I voted on the first ones in 14 or 15, is we typically went with the lowest bid. And one way to get the lowest bid would be to say, "This is only going to be 13 weeks instead of 20," right?
That's, that's one of the ways and-
And then when it ends up being 20, because there's no contract, you just, you keep billing, right? You finished a project. I mean, you've got to finish the project.
Correct.
And so, my point is, and I've looked at, and I appreciate, I got all the invoices I've looked through. My eyes were bleeding a little bit, but I've looked through a lot of them. When I looked at the invoice, it seems like the work was being done. I mean, the people are putting in their hours, they're there, you know, meetings at so-and-so site, Allen Road, blah, 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 whatever. There's no way to go back and look at whether or not that was, that was right or not. I'm guessing that it is. The problem is more at the beginning when you're trying to get the bid and you win the bid and you say it's 13 weeks and it's 20. And in 2013, it's, you know, it's 18, but then it's 24. And then it's eight weeks, now it's 20. You know, I can go down the list here. And I don't know how long in the past that was going on. I don't know how long this firm has been doing our work, but it's, in the past, that is true. But I think that maybe we're getting closer now with this new process of preventing that. Do you, I mean, do you agree with that?
I, you know, obviously 18's not going to prove that out. 19 will, but not 18. Unfortunately, you know, because we got to look at all the work that we did add in. One of the things though, and like I said, you know, it's a pattern that we're seeing here. You know, they're submitting an RFP here. It's an open process. We don't ever know how many we're going to get or how many firms are actually going to submit that, you know, call and ask for that. But out of the, the four construction years, out of the five years, timeframe here, three of those years, there were comparable numbers between the two firms. You know, Rooker Milkie being one, SEH was one of them, CBS Squared was one, and then Baxter Woodman was the other one. So, the Baxter Woodman one-
This is in 14? You're talking about 14 or?
No, 14, 14, we only got the one proposal. As I, you know, mentioned that we were looking to try and do 14, 15, but since we only got the one proposal-
That's right.
We only went with the 14. Once again, they're doing the design or the construction management estimating on the numbers prior. Do any of the design work or any idea how long we're going to give the contractors to complete the work?
And I mean, one of my points is we do know how to write these contracts. Out of the contracts we, we received, the Stantec contract from 2015, slightly different work. They're doing the shoreline work and that. In that professional services agreement, there's a contract price and I don't want to beat a dead horse in the contract, but we know what these things should look like, right? And for whatever reason, these projects were treated differently. We know how this contract should look. They give you a contract price, they estimate it. And then they say, "Stantec shall submit to the client in a timely manner documentation of the revisions to attachment A, adjusting the contract when service time and price are required." That would allow to me in my head more oversight of why, okay, it's, you estimated 13, now you're 20. When you get to the 14th week, they have to start submitting change orders and we can start figuring out like, why is this so much over? What can we do to concentrate that? Do we need four people full-time out here for the next six weeks to get the project done? Because that's, when you add these numbers up for some of these weeks, you're talking about hundreds of hours of time in a matter of four weeks. That's a lot of time. That's five, six people out there working full-time. And was that necessary? Looking back, it's really hard to see. You know, we got the invoices and stuff. They're billing the time. But looking back, we just don't know because we don't have a change order in front of us saying why that had to happen. All we can say is, well, there might have been some weather issues or something. So, I think that was one of my big points there. I appreciate your comments on who, where the estimates come from. That's helpful.
Anybody else? Saying nothing, move on to, and now what did you do, 14?
Yes.
And?
Yeah, we're on 15.
You're going to 15 now?
It's combined though, 15 and 16 are kind of one year, right?
15 and 16, yeah.
You know, looking back, I do not know why I titled the RFP that way. But, so the 2015 projects that we bid out, we had a couple different projects that were included. Allen Road was our major project for that year. And we went out to bid, it was in the background, so May, May 21, 2015, we got two bids, 2.6 million, which greatly exceeded our 1.8 million dollar estimate. So, we went back to the drawing board, did some, a little bit of reconfiguration. We did shorten up the Allen Road project because we felt if construction costs were truly that high, we wanted to get out there and at least do a portion of that street. That was a project that we were planning on using impact fees on, those transportation impact fees. And we knew that the timeframe was coming up on the ability to spend those fees. So, we were pushing that project in order to use those fees on that. So, we turned around and we bid the project again and opened bids on, in June. So, just a month later, after doing, you know, work on that and running through another bid. And we only received one bid and it was still higher than what we were comfortable doing. We then came to the common council. Council then passed a resolution giving us another three years in order to spend those fees. We waited until December, we bid the project, and then we got two bids in. So, you know, the design RFP started out at 36,434. Our actual cost, once we finally got through the design and bidding process, was 85,000. So, from the initial start of the project up through the bid one, our cost was 54,000, which was 18,000, you know, greater than what the RFP was. But in looking back at the invoices, I earmarked a couple things and estimated that, you know, 14,600 of that was on the Allen Road changes that we did. The RFP went out, indicated that we weren't looking to have a need for storm sewer on Allen Road. And then when we got into the design and started looking where we could be putting the multi-use path that we're going to do, we ended up having to put it into an existing ditch line. And in order to do that, we had to put in some very large storm sewer and tie some things together in order to make that pathway work. So, this is the first section of path as you come off of Concord Road. When you go down through there in front of those houses, there used to be this huge ditch that's now gone. And, and we put the pathway above that. So, the construction management, 67,000 was the RFP, 176,000 was the construction management part of that. It was estimated eight weeks. Construction was June through October, which was 20 weeks. The contract, and I did, had, had this information here, the construction contract project line, so the milestones did allow 28 weeks on this project, which, you know, doesn't happen until after all the design is done. Getting to your point on the estimating of hours, Rooker Milkie's estimate was 725 hours for the construction management. The second firm that we had looked at their information had 555, so they're about 200 hours less on the whole construction management part of it. On that project, it wasn't able to start until 2016. So, based on, you know, rate changes within the firm, that added $5,700. We ended up using a different project manager on it because the one that was originally slated was no longer available. That added $20 at 275 hours, so 5,500 there. Survey technician had also increased from 63 to 79, and that was 54 and a half hours. So, that was extra $875. The project manager cost ended up coming in just over 24,000.
Can I stop you for a second? That's the reason we need contracts. Because you can't just have a firm just say, "Well, we're going to raise your rate because we got a different guy." Right?
Yeah.
That's made up in your firm's overhead. It shouldn't come back to us.
But I would like to, I mean, can I speak?
Go ahead.
It was a different year that that work was done from when it was originally planned. That's was my, that's my point.
My point is that's why we need contracts.
If there were a contract, if there were a contract in force at that time, that would not have happened.
You don't know that. If that contract expired at the end of 15, then 16 would have been a new year.
Well, that's, but.
You don't, you don't know that. I mean, that's.
You could get, you would have them say, hey, we have to push it back.
Contract, so.
But you would say, look, we got to push it back.
Clauses and all sorts of stuff. Different people have different rates. So you have to look at it that way. Go ahead, Mark.
I just wanted to answer that question.
One, but if there was a contract, the, the reason for the price increase for that project manager was a different classification for that project manager?
Right.
That shouldn't be our problem.
Let me, let me just be clear. If, if the, if there was a contract and then it was supposed to be done in that year, then if the work ended up getting pushed into the following year, it would have been a, it would have been open for discussion about a change in the rates because it would have been a future year.
But not a 20 dollar increase?
Uh, depends on who would be doing the work.
Okay. Well, if I go to take my car into the shop and they say, well, this mechanic couldn't do it, this other guy did. But he's, he gets paid 40 dollars more an hour or 20 dollars more an hour. So you have to pay an extra 500 bucks.
If it was two years in the future, possibly.
Yep. Go ahead. Do you have more questions? Okay, Mark, continue.
Just a couple of things. So our, our net construction review cost ended up being an extra 49,000. Survey 9,300 and the other personnel was 11,000. The construction, original construction bid was 1.4 million. Final cost is 1.3 million.
Mark and, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mark, and this year, based on the documents you provided me, there didn't seem to be major, major significant engineering or construction changes. The change orders, I'm seeing, you know, some water main conflicts, adding fiber to the surface of Allen Road. Now, I understand the construction took longer than originally estimated, but we ultimately used actually 71,000 less in quantities on this whole project too. Is that right?
That's correct.
Is, um, I mean, when you start looking at the, the construction management again for this year, obviously the original estimate's off, but once we, we actually crunched the numbers, that's an extra 64 hours per week of construction management for the extra weeks. When I look back at the invoices and it's, you know, the invoices are sometimes a little hard to tell because this project was weird. But there's, there's periods of months where there's very little work being done in construction management or design at all. And then all of a sudden months where it picks up. What's, is there a reason for that?
So the, the bulk of the work and there's some of the comments that are in some of the years, it all depends on how well I was able to track and, and pull out the numbers, comes down to the project closeout. So when you look at those, you, you'll probably see that, you know, in this instance, it was probably 2017 when we're doing project closeout on this. They got it constructed. You come back, you do your punch list. They, you know, you know, the one thing that's always difficult, and I don't know why, but it always just seems to be difficult how you can have two people out there. You measure something, you agree on quantities. And then the minute they send out the pay app, everybody's found that extra quantities that we have to try and work our way through with the contractor. We try to be fair to the contractors, but you know, it does take time. There might be a couple of months where nothing happens. You know, everybody, you know, stated their case and they kind of walked away to cool down. And then they come back to the table and we get the project closed out. So that's where you'll, you'll see some of that. You generally don't see the, uh, the sheer number of people that are on the project when it's a working project when they're in the closeout. Generally, you know, um, you know, the project manager, maybe the construction review, looking at quantities, that type of thing, so.
So back to the point that was made earlier about the increase in, in wages, I, that also struck me as strange. And I knew that was happening when I'm looking at some of these documents and what was bid. But we know that we can do that differently, right? I mean, and Kunkel's maybe not a good example. I don't know exactly what all happened there. But in their agreement that we had with Kunkel, they actually outline exactly what that rate's supposed to be, which again is a good reason to have the contract. They say on page two of three of their, I think it was actually just a response letter. We don't have all the documents for whatever reason. But they said our resident project representative, which I think was their term for the project manager, was going to be 65 bucks an hour. They put it in the contract and then it doesn't go up to 85 or 105 or 125. And that's something that I think obviously moving forward, we need to focus on so that we don't get stung because someone leaves and we need to put a higher person on that project. Cause that, those are stings, you know, the little five grand here, eight grand here, 300 here adds up. And then, you know, we're over budget.
So in regards to the variance of, of what we got from that contract to what we have in place for, for service with R and M, who structures that contract? Is it you or is it?
There isn't one. We don't have a contract.
We have, we have a general agreement of scope?
No.
No.
We get nothing. You hear crickets?
Yeah.
Zero.
But let me, let me just answer the question about the rates. So when we provided the proposal, we provided the rates and Alderman-Rosek is correct. You can structure a contract that says we're going to lock in these rates if you do the work within that timeframe that you say that you're going to do it. And in those instances, the work was dragging on to the future year. And so that's what I was, that was my only point I was trying to.
I understand that, but it, it should be more like a general increase type, 2%. I would think unless you gave, somebody got a huge raise, but that's not our problem.
Yeah, I'm okay with guys making whatever they want to make. You know, they, they want to charge 400 bucks an hour and they're the best design guys in the world. That's cool. The only problem with that is, and I agree with you, Stan, if it goes into the other year, but that's exactly why a contract is perfect, right? I mean, you would have that provision in there if the project.
Being on that, yes.
Right, yeah. You agree with that, right? I mean, if the contract, for whatever reason, forces be under control, goes into the next year, rates will be, will be held the same or there'll be a 2% increase or a 5%, you know, the contract protects you too, right?
I think it protects both of us.
Yeah, I mean, having the contract in and why, why it was treated differently for all of these years was mind boggling to me because it protects both of us. Because if there is that increase, you can get it. You know, we can say, hey, if it goes into the next year, you guys get an extra 10% or an extra 5%.
The second piece that you have been talking about that I do think is, is very relevant is when we're looking at, you know, how much time is it going to take to do the construction management of this project? It's a, it's a line on a piece of paper and, and a bunch, and a bunch of information. If you wait till after the construction or the design is done, then you construct in a future year, then you will have that full set of plans. You'll know whether there's storm sewer or there's not storm sewer. So as Mark.
That's what we're trying, yeah, that's what.
That's what we want.
Was Mark brought up, it's like, well, Allen Road, it was storm sewers attitude. Well, there was no storm sewer in there when we put in, that was going to take however many weeks it was.
Eight weeks, I think it's.
And so, so if you did that where you had enough discipline to decide which streets you wanted to construct in one, or design in one year, and you were going to construct them in a future, in the, in the next year, at the end of that year, you would have a much better ability to more accurately, you know, more accurately, I think you, I heard you say the word spitball. I'm saying you should be able to more accurately determine how long it's going to take. You could ask a contractor how long it was going to take and you could get much more accurate in your estimates.
And we could also send out our, our construction bids at a better time than in the spring whenever. There's better times to send out for construction bids.
Yeah, but I do think the city's done a really good job of getting them out in, in, ahead of the, the big rush.
But we would, we really have, be able to pick and choose our spot.
You don't want to go, you don't want to go to November for the future year, but you could go end of December and get them out.
Right. We, we could pick when we wanted to. There would never be a rush is what I'm saying. We would always have plans on the shelf, ready to send out the bid. So for, for construction management and, and, and construction.
Matt, did you have more to?
Yeah, no, and my comment on the spitball was what we did for 18 was we tried to say, look, we think construction management should take X amount of weeks, you know? So that was the spitballing. What, what you're describing is what I think the process we would like to go to, which is doing the design the year before so that when your firm or whoever comes in and bids on that construction management, they've got the design in front of them. They've got kind of a, a better idea of how long that should take so that we're, there's not this massive variance that we have to either eat up in the construction or whatever.
But you can understand if a project has no storm sewer in it, but then all of a sudden it has storm sewer in it.
For sure.
Utilities adds, adds water main relays or they add the sewer or relining or something else gets added. None of that's in there in the front end way back when. And so if you have the design done the year ahead of time, absolutely, you can get much more accurate with your, with your.
And that's better for the city on budgeting too, because we.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the questions there is that, that, and that's something that we talked, we have talked about is you have to change your, your timeframe then because you have to budget for the design in one year and budget for the construction and the management the following year. So you, you, you end up with about a six or nine month, you know, leg there. So that's something that if, if the council wants to do it, and I don't think it's a bad idea, we have to have the discipline to say, either we're going to move things forward or we're going to take a pause for nine months in construction. But, because there's just not time to do them both.
It's kind of nice to see everybody shaking their head. And you're shaking your head. Yeah, that, that. Who, who's responsible? This is just a general question. Whose responsibility is it to review that process and to have come to council or to make a recommendation that we could improve process? As we're kind of flushing out right now, because it, again, everybody's kind of nodding their head, yeah, that.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if I'm going to answer your question, but the, the challenge that goes with that is that, that it sounds really great. The challenge that goes with it is you as a council have to have the discipline to decide this year what you're going to do next year and stick to it. The other thing that happens is in a great city like this, you know, there's a lot of businesses that want to come to town and they want to do something. And they'll come walking into a staff meeting and they'll say, hey, we want to do this. And the city's got to react quickly to try to accommodate them or to do something. And so you don't know right now who's coming in January of this year that says they want to be in the city of Condam Walk. And so there is a lot of scrambling by staff to really put things together and make it happen and, and attract those businesses and make it, make this a business friendly community. So that's a, that's a challenge that goes with it. So I want to just make sure I'm, you know, it's, it definitely helps with some of these things, but be aware, there's other challenges that you have to, that you have to be ready to deal with.
And one of the other things too is this council may decide on the, the design. The next council, there's an election every year. There may be a different council. And they're expected then to approve that construction. So you may have differences of opinion there. When you have it all in one time, it's one council making a decision on design, construction management, and then construction. If you have an election, you may have a change in Alderman or mayor or whatever. That may have a different philosophy. That's, that's something you have.
I'd like to ask Stan a question.
Uh, Lou had his hand up first.
It, it seems like this process has been in place for 20 some years, so.
Since 2002?
Yeah, it, well, it hasn't changed. It hasn't had an ebb and flow every other year.
Never had this much, we never spent this much money. We used to spend a hundred thousand a year, which never was a big deal.
Sure. But I, I would, I would think that to your point, again, I just, I want to get to the crux of the, of the process that we're looking at. If we put a process in place that is, is flawed and it changes dramatically every time we have an election and it ends up costing the city more money and, and creates chaos in the system, that's not a benefit either, right? I mean.
Did I, I, I wasn't suggesting it would create chaos. I was just saying you need to be aware of these other challenges that may, might come up.
That are related to street contracts?
Well, it's related to if you have, you'll have your street project and here's what you want to do. And then, and somebody will come into town and, and say, hey, I want to do this. And all of a sudden this project has to go with it. And so you're sliding that in there with it and you're adding, adding other projects into it.
Okay.
Yeah, but you know, I'm, I'm sorry.
Hang on, hang on.
I had, before I forget, can I ask?
Are you done, Lou?
I got one question in regards to that. So if, if somebody comes into town and wants to do a project and it, and it has a cost impact, generally the developers are paying for that, right? So it's not.
Generally, but sometimes it's a project that's got to be, um, something's got to be done to, to help that project along. I mean, I, it, over the many years I've been working in the city, you know, just see a lot of different things happen. And I would like you to be aware of that. If, you know, you can call the play one year, but something can happen in that six to eight months where all of a sudden there's another better idea about sliding some more things into it and then those numbers change.
Yep. So, you know, so just real quick examples of that that have occurred in my tenure here. Silver Lake Plaza, we redid because of the gateway, you know, so that, that project got put in there. The Wisconsin Avenue project, the 2014 project, that also included a lot of work that had to deal with the Worthington, but also with the construction of our community center. So, you know, those were two projects that came along. And, and as we know with the larger building project, that's not a guaranteed project until that construction bid's there and, and the council's approving it. So that's when you start looking at, at having to do those. So those are just three quick examples of where that did occur.
And that should be done through this body as policy. And I can't see that being affected.
No, I just wanted you to know there's extraneous factors that happen because of.
Derek?
I was just curious if it would help to do the construction bid before the construction management bid for your estimating purposes as a.
We did a design bid, then the construction bid, then the construction management.
You've got some kind of awareness of what their timeframe is. Would that be helpful? I'm just, it's just a general question or doesn't it matter? Could you do it at the same time and it shouldn't matter? Cause we're, we're hearing, what we're hearing is that having the design done will help with, with.
Well, as long as we're talking about the perfect world, let's do that. Perfect world would be you bid the project out to a contractor. You get a construction bid from the contractor and you ask them for their construction schedule and, and they provide a detailed construction schedule. And you know when they're going to be out there, when they're going to start, how many crews they're going to have working there.
Weather dependent, right.
Well, you know, but, and, and, and a lot of detail as far as what they're going to do, which we do ask for a contractor to provide once they start a project. And if you had that information, that would make, well, I think that would.
That would make the RFP process easier to, to nail down, to get an accurate number on your hours.
Right.
You should be within a couple of percent.
Should be.
Well, enough to do and not to exceed contract.
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay, that's, I'm just, we're talking about the process and maybe that's what we do.
It extends the process, but yeah, you get your better numbers. Done?
Yep.
Kevin?
There was a comment that was made and I do apologize for yelling at that time. My understanding is that my, my job here is to approve or disapprove projects with the information that is given to me. I am not an expert in construction. I'm relying on the information that I'm given through my packets and the questions that I ask to make the decisions that are going to benefit this community. By you saying that, it's really our job to understand what's going on. I need to disagree with that in a respectful way. I believe that it's the job of the city to give us all pertinent information even after the fact so that this doesn't occur. Where now you're having to come and explain to us why we're 162% over. If we're going to be adding additional roads, we understand that. But I personally do not understand at that time that at the end of the day, it's going to be 100 and plus percent over what we originally bid it, or what, what we originally approved, excuse me. So I, I guess, I guess that kind of unnerves me a little bit because at the end of the day, we're here to approve or disapprove with the information that's given to us. Period. And if there's something missing, the onus should not be on council, but it should be on the individuals that were giving us the information.
Okay. Any other comments?
Are we still, are we on 16?
We're on 15.
We're on 15. Can I get one more number clarification, Mark? You said something about the actual, the RFP was for 36,015. And then it, was it, you said 85 at one point?
Actual, so.
Not, not 55, the, the numbers that were given to us? It seems like 55 comes out to 19,000 in additional. I just, I heard 85 and I didn't see that number on my paper.
Yeah, no, and, and so the information I had put out originally, I was looking that I, I mistook a couple of those numbers. I thought the, the extra 30,000 that it took to get to the project to bid the second time and, and also the third, was part of that number. And.
So we should add 30,000 to the actual, right?
So, so the, so the actual cost for all three, you know, design and all three bids was 85,506 dollars.
So the overage was 49,000.
So it was, you know, so the actual design on, on the first phase of it was, uh, came in at 54,000, which was 18,000 dollars over, you're correct.
Okay. So one last question is while we're on this year. So we had roughly 50,000 over on, on design or over our. So we had roughly fifty thousand over on on design or over our actual estimate. And a hundred and nine thousand over on construction management. So that's roughly a hundred and sixty thousand and we're under by forty thousand on construction. So we would be over the RFPs by a hundred and roughly a hundred and twenty thousand, maybe a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty thousand. How is it that we're still under budget? Was the budget higher than that amount or is there a is there a contingency built into our street projects?
So when when we release the street projects, we don't, you know, so the the numbers that come to the council for the award of the construction doesn't max out that number. We we try to get it close, but we don't max that out.
So there's a contingency in there?
Yes.
That's what I was asking.
Okay.
And is it a percentage that we use as a contingency?
No, generally, it's, uh, you know, we look to see what streets fit and.
I got you. So we save a little buffer money. Okay, that's all I needed.
Could I also add something? You also add, we also, cities typically would bid a bunch of alternates to see.
So that we make sure we're under budget?
Well, to see if you can get more work done for the budget you have allocated. So we would be putting that into the project and adding that into there, even though it may never get awarded. So we did all the work for it, but it may never actually happen. But it was is to maximize the amount of work you could get done with that budget.
You would still have the you would still have the design for that.
Yeah.
Street that could be put on the shelf for future use because the design should change. I mean, say if you say if you have a ma- a base bid and you have three alternates and you only use the base bid and one alternate, the other two are still sitting there so that you can always rebid them sometime in the future. It shouldn't change too much, so. Okay, that's it. Sixteen?
No, we're done to seventeen.
Everyone's seventeen.
That's right, yeah. He was combined.
So seventeen? Twenty seventeen, you know, on- once again, we look to try to make some changes. And with the the work that we had that year with was the reconstructive South Main Street down by the park. And then we were also doing the uh, the first year of the accelerated streets where we pulverized and overlaying Riverwood Trails. And so we looked to try and do some of that work in-house. We had a recent hire that had some skills and wanted to take on the projects. And and so we were looking to do that. There was a little bit more bidding assistance in in the design part of it. We had not done an RFP because we were looking to, as I mentioned, handle the bulk of the work in-house. But we still ended up with uh, just under forty-one thousand dollars on on the design assistance. Because, you know, one of the things that happens in the city is that, you know, once you get into the summertime with the stormwater responsibilities we have, you know, we we run short on time. Unfortunately, that's what happened on this. We started out thinking that we're going to handle the design or the construction management in-house. We went a couple of months where we're actually relying quite a bit on Rooker and Milkie as our our city engineer to do that. And so knowing, you know, the council's desires and thoughts at that time, I knew that I needed to get out and do an RFP because we we couldn't go through the entire project relying on them without some type of a RFP process. We only did get the ones middle from Rooker and Milkie. It was one of these things that, you know, we're, as I mentioned, towards the middle of the project. The construction management RFP that they provided was thirty-eight thousand seven hundred. Their actual cost was fifty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-five. Construction was estimated for six weeks at three hundred and ninety-four hours. The first document I provided to you indicated that the total number of hours was eight hundred and eighty-three. I I do have to apologize because I was not able to replicate that number. I don't know where I came up with that. When I looked at the invoices and added everything up, I came up with total hours of five hundred and forty-five. That broke down to hours for the street work of four hundred and thirty-two. That's the number that would compare to the three hundred and ninety-four that was in their RFP. The RFP did not include survey work, which had an additional fifty hours. And it did not include any of the inspection costs for the sanitary sewer and water. At the start of that project, they were doing the work themselves. Once again, we get busy as departments, they weren't able to complete. And so Rooker and Milkie came in and provided people to do that work. That work costs an extra, you know, six thousand dollars. The survey work was another fifty-eight hundred. So when you look at it, this actually came out fairly close to what their RFP was.
So in two thousand seventeen, we only spent roughly a hundred thousand dollars on engineering services for our street projects between design and construction management. Is that correct? Forty plus forty-one plus fifty-six?
So the forty-one, but then we also had construction services prior to the RFP and that was forty-four thousand dollars.
So we were at about a hundred and forty grand, okay. For about two hun- one point two million worth of uh, street projects.
So the.
That was a good year for us then.
So, you know, one of the things, as I mentioned, that was the first year where we were doing the accelerated. But we only had the one block of Main Street down by the park that we were reconstructing. And then the rest of it was the pulverizing overlay out in Riverwood Trails, which, you know, there's not a lot of design work that has to go into that. Similar to what we did last year in the orchards. Correct. Go ahead, Kevin.
Why was the thing such as sanitary works and things on those lines not in the RFP?
So, you know, with the utilities with their engineer and and their staff availability, they generally, over the last few years, have been trying to do all the their inspection work themselves. So they handle that with their staff. Now, this was a year that they ended up running low on staff time. And so we supplemented what they were doing with having someone from Rooker and Milkie coming in, come in and do that work. And that was at their request, you know, that.
At whose request?
At the utilities' request.
Utilities?
Yes, because they weren't able to and it was, uh, looking at the wrong year. Seventeen. Sixty-two hours is is what it was. It was towards the end of the project. One of the reasons, I think, in seventeen, the cost of design was lower because, like you said, when they did the, they did the the overlays, there's not a lot of cost involved there. It's just the cost when you have to rebuild the whole street. Correct. So depending on what you're going to get, you we may get years where we have a lot of streets done, such as last year with the orchards. And this year, coming up with the whole Whitman Hills area, there's not a lot of cost in designing it because it's just put in, take care of it. Go ahead.
Yeah, what, um, so this year's overages weren't as bad as the previous years is what I'm hearing because of some adjustments, correct?
Seventeen, we were talking about.
Well, your numbers are, yeah, we we go from three ninety-four to instead of eighty-three, only five hundred and forty-five hours. So our construction management numbers, at least in this spreadsheet, should be lower. Has has this same, who's who did our design work for our roads for the last twenty years? Is it, has it been mostly Rooker and Milkie doing it? Is it been other other, now, we had Kunkel in there, is there others before that?
I'm only aware of the Kunkel year. I've been in the.
As an anomaly?
I've been in the position since the end of oh-six, so beginning of oh-seven.
I would assume it was Rooker and Milkie because remember, the nineteen ninety-five resolution was that the city engineer did everything. And in twenty-eleven, the council said, let's start carving out definable projects and RFPing it. So I think from twenty-eleven or before twenty-eleven, it was just done as part of the city engineer.
Gotcha, okay, so the the two thousand eleven, when our scope increases on our road projects, then we go to outside design, construction management consultants. On a more regular basis for larger projects.
That was the council.
Okay, so so we've got a a little bit longer history. I I think I might have made this comment before and and so I guess take it with a grain of salt or sand or whatever. I'm sure Stan will correct me if I've got it wrong, the quote.
He's listening, yeah, he's listening.
Thanks.
Oh, is the camera rolling?
Yep.
No, no.
Documented.
So it it it's just, it's odd with with as much experience that they have in the city, working on our projects and being involved for so long. How, why are it it it's never close to being right? You know, is it every year is just such a big problem? Is is there something with how we're designing the streets or what ones we're choosing? I would think with the law of averages, you'd get one year where, man, we're within ten percent, you know, good year. Because frankly, we wouldn't be here if these numbers weren't so large. You know, if there if the variances were ten, fifteen percent, maybe even twenty percent, we'd probably, eh, you know, that's kind of the way it goes. You know, things go haywire. You know, the, you know, you have the bad springs, really wet, you have a concrete shortage, whatever. But do you have any, do you have any concept and maybe Stan can answer this too? I mean, why none of these are even remotely close? I mean, we're not close on any of the construction management and we're really far away on the design stuffs too.
Go ahead, Stan.
I I would, I'd like to answer that. I tried to answer it as succinctly as I could in the letter that I sent to the to the mayor and to the council. But I guess what I'm, what you need to do is you need to look at what the art, what you had in the RFP and the level of, you know, what you'd asked for in there. And and you're saying, tell us what, how long it's going to take to do this design and this in this construction management for this 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 project that hasn't even been designed yet. Tell us ahead of time what you, how much time you think it's going to take to do it. And, you know, I think we're we're pretty good at doing that. But then what you need to do is you need to take a look at what's changed. And so back here was when it was at, something was asked for. And then along that design process, things get changed and get added in. And so I think that's some of the things I think Mark was trying to address. But, you know, I I made, you know, we made a list of here, this was added, this was added, this was changed. The project was bid, one of them was bid three times. You have to rebid the project and and once you rebid it, you're not just taking that information and then rebidding it and 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 just, you know, sending it out again. You're repackaging it a different way. You were redesigning some things so that you could try to get the cost down. So some of those things that were done where you're spending time and money on engineering were done to save money on the construction side of things. So it wasn't just simply done to to keep busy. It was some, it was done for reasons to try to lower the cost of the projects. And so again, back to what we were talking about earlier. If you want to really nail this down so you can say, here's how much time are you going to put into it? You you really, if you design the projects one year and then you stop, you pause, and then you take a look at those projects. I mean, that will make that will make our life a lot easier. It'll define things for you more more so. It just may, you've got to have, we've all got to have the discipline to do it that way.
So, yeah.
So I don't know if I answered your question.
Well, you kind of did and and you raised a couple of other little minor questions in there, which is pretty typical for me. So for just looking at fifteen sixteen as an example, you said, you know, maybe there was additional work done to save money. The construction, there weren't significant engineering changes that year. The quantities used went down seventy-one thousand, but our construction management and design all went up significantly. So I I think I would agree with you as if we redesigned something and saved significant amount of money. But we ended up spending more on design and construction management than we did on what we allegedly saved in the construction summary and engineering numbers there. So that that I don't necessarily agree with, at least on on this year and and some of the other years. Most of our constructions, what's odd about these numbers to me in my head is most of the constructions, the hard construction costs, you know, the asphalt, the the sewers, those are are pretty right on, right? We don't have huge, major, massive changes in those numbers.
And we did that work. So we designed the projects and then you do a quantity takeoff and you would itemize each one of those items. Those were unit price contracts. And we were able to accurately define every one of those pieces of that project that would be needed for that contractor to build it. And so if you do that same thing with the get the project all designed and then you ask us to say, okay, how long are you going to, how much time are you going to have to spend out there when this is being built and the contractor is telling you how long it's going to be built? We can even more accurately define our numbers. So it's a it's 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 a function of accuracy of the inputs to give you that information. And so that's, in my mind, that's that's great news. That means that our projects, plans are clear and concise. Our quantities are accurate and there's not a lot of change orders. So the documents are clear. And then the contractor is getting paid for exactly the work that they they that they're doing. If they go over those quantities, they get paid more for those quantities, if they're under. And so in my mind, that's a that's a positive all the way around for that project. And so if you if you translate that into the engineering side of things and do what you're talking about doing, that will help also.
So what you're, what I read in between the lines is that there's there's some, or has been, at least for some of these years, fundamental problems with our RFP because we're either not asking the right questions or outlining enough for you to give us a proper estimate.
I think that it's gotten more accurate when you started to put the numbers in.
Okay.
I do think that it's gotten gotten more, you know, it's 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 certainly, it's easier to pay attention to it and look at it and say, okay, here's what we're going to, here's how we're going to attack the project. But if the city puts those numbers in, if you do, if you change your process, the the numbers the city puts in will be, you'll be able to extract those more accurately.
Do we, and and this is maybe a more general question for whoever can answer it. Do we, when I look at the construction, the hard construction numbers, I see those numbers really close or most of the time under what was was actually bid. Do we hold their feet to the fire on what they can charge and aren't doing the same on design and construction management? In other words, are are our construction managers or or whoever's monitoring the project saying, nope, you bid this, you have to stick with this? And but we're not maybe doing the same thing on the other side?
On the, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think we should be comparing the construction project to the engineering side of things because the contractor is getting a document that says, here's every single piece of work you're supposed to put into it. Here's every detail. I would love to sit down and show you.
Gotcha, no, I know, I got you, I hear you.
Show you the bidding documents and the level of detail that's on that set of plans.
So you're saying it's easier for them to look at that and you're saying it's going to be three tons of gravel on this spot around this curb? And they need to figure that out, how much that's going to cost?
They don't need to figure it out, we provide that in the documents. They're they're told exactly how many quantities and that's part of our design process is to itemize those those items accurately and specifically. And then if they go over them during construction, let's just say we got to cut a little deeper, well, then there'll be more gravel on that job. But we build some extra costs into some of those things so that hopefully we don't have a huge amount of change orders. So if I sat down with you and showed you a set of bidding documents that Terry and Violet and Maria prepare, you'll be able to see the level of detail that goes into that. And that helps you on the construction side of things where you don't have huge overruns.
Gotcha.
Everly and I prepared them.
Okay, that was very.
Thank you, Stan.
Stan, that was very helpful. I have one, now that we have a nice discussion going, as long as I I have the mayor's permission to have one more question.
One more question, because then we got three other people.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Well, we had a nice, it was a good discussion, it's very helpful. Is there any other city where your firm is both the city engineer and then also does design work and construction management for like you do in Economowalk?
Yeah, there are other communities that we do that in.
How many others? Where you do all three essentially?
Yeah, I know, probably, I don't know, probably four or five.
How many other communities do you, I mean, I'm assuming you guys do work though, like design work, construction management for potentially hundreds of communities and municipalities or?
I don't know if it's hundreds, but.
Well, you got sewer groups and.
Yeah.
School districts and all these little, you know, municipal groupings.
You do all municipal work, right?
We typically do mainly do municipal work. We do a little bit of private work in our Green Bay office and our Madison office.
Okay, not not on this one.
Not on this one.
I appreciate that answer, thank you.
Kevin?
Now if I can remember what I was going to say.
Should have wrote it down.
I covered it all, you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, um. There seems to be, in my eyes, since nineteen ninety-five, a complacency that exists because of the fact that everything has to pass through R and M, bottom line. We talked about changes and add-ins and lower costs. To answer your question, as far as I see, Matt, I don't think that at any one point in time it really mattered about coming back in front of council because they had no contract. You had stated it and that was that they have an open checkbook, bottom line. Because there's no contract, there's nothing to hold their feet to the fire and say, you can't do this, period. And that's why it's so vitally important that going forward from here, from this date, that everything we do has a contract. Because then this cannot or has the potential of not happening. For since nineteen ninety-five, there's been one company that has done very good work for Economowalk, but has also taken advantage of the fact that they don't have a contract, period. That needs to stop and it needs to stop now. We can go through each and every one of these and every single, every single number here will have a reason. Every single number here, there will be something associated with it on why we paid what we paid. But the big problem here that I think we all understand is the fact that there's no contract. But these numbers could have been triple. It wouldn't have mattered. And we're going to still sit sit here and talk about the milk that has been spilt, when in essence, what we really should be doing at this point? is putting something together in place right now so that this does not happen. The other thing I want to bring up that I think is important is the RFP process. Since I've been on this board, on this council, excuse me, we may get one or two bids, always the same bids. That needs to stop. If that means that some people have to start making phone calls and finding out why other, in the other firms are not bidding on something, then that needs to be done. Because it's just, it just doesn't smell right to me when every single time, the only people we use are, oh, we've been with them forever, so we're going to use them again. This needs to stop. And right now, we are in a position where we can make that stop. Regardless if we're all on this board, on, on council in two years, three years, one year, is immaterial. But what really is important is that when that time does come, and maybe somebody's sitting here, or somebody's sitting over there that's different, that's new, that's green, that doesn't understand, we put something in force that's going to help this community to understand that we're not going to spend or give a blank check to any one company. That's what we need to do now. These numbers are these numbers. And I really appreciate the history that you've given me tonight so that I understand why these numbers are. But I think at this point going forward, we need to just say enough. This is what we need to do to make sure this doesn't happen again from this date forward.
We're going through the numbers because that's what everybody wanted to do. We're going to go through the numbers until we get done with them so that we can move on and not have to worry about them again. Once we're done, then we move on to the next step. So let's finish what we got, and then we're going to fold this up, put it away. And hopefully someone's taking notes on all the things. I think Sarah's got notes on suggestions that we've had tonight. And we'll put together a policy on how we're going to do it, bring it up. Is it going to change tomorrow? No, it's not going to change tomorrow, but it will change as soon as we get the policy in place. You can't just do it overnight. It's going to take some time. But it will be done before our next process of, of construction. Okay? So let's get through this. Everybody agree we're done with it? When we're done with it, we're done with it. Lou?
You had mentioned that you, you provide all three services to a variety of communities, four or five-ish. Is the process the same that in those other communities that it is here in Economowoc? And the reason I ask that is because I want to, I want to understand if, if we're an anomaly in, in what we, we're doing, or if that's kind of standard process for the communities that you're involved in? And if that process is typical in the community that you're involved in, that you provide all services for? Is that typical to the communities that you don't provide all three for?
I don't know, I wouldn't necessarily say there's a typical process. I would say, I mean, Attorney Riffle is probably better person to answer this question than, than I am, because he works in hundreds and his firm works in hundreds of communities. But it's a matter of what is the process that that community wants to use? And so some communities will say, we're, we're going to appoint you as the city engineer or the village engineer for three years, or for five years, or for two years. The city of Economowoc, they appointed our firm and me as city engineer in nineteen ninety-five. And as I put in my letter, we've had an excellent working relationship, solved a lot of problems, improved a lot of things in the city. And I have a handout at the end of the meeting I want to give you on the improvement that the city's made in their, in the Pesa ratings and the street conditions in the city. So it, there's no standard answer to that. There's different, it's, it's a matter of what, what is that board or that council comfortable with? And so I don't know whether Attorney Riffle can answer that better than I can. But you can, you can ask for whatever terms you want to ask of an engineering firm.
Well, Stan, if you're okay before you answer?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask one question before you answer?
You're my boss, man. You tell me what to do.
So services provided between the two of you are, are different. What I'm trying to understand is, in the communities that you're providing all three for, regardless of the, the length of time that you've done that, is this process that we're in right now, that we're looking to change, typical? Or is it an anomaly associated with that? And the reason, again, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure that out is it, somebody's steering it, right? Somebody's making the recommendations. So are you, I, in those communities that you're providing all three, do you make the recommendations that get them down this path? Or?
Recommendations for the projects that are going to get done?
Process.
The process, no. They, the, the community usually, usually outlines the process, and then we obviously help with what projects they want to do, or, or coming up with a capital improvement plan. Some communities have a public works director that wants to do, do one piece of it. And so we, we add resources to whatever staff a community has. So if they have, some of them might have their own city engineer, but their own, one city engineer is not going to be able to do the work to get a project done. It takes a, it takes a whole staff of people with a lot of different talents to be able to put a project together. You can hire one engineer and they're not going to be able to deliver those projects. So my comment about asking Attorney Riffle wasn't about how they contract for legal stuff. It's that he works in communities that have engineers and they contract with engineers. And so he could tell you all the different ways that you could, you could have that arranged with a, with your, with an engineering firm.
But you represent the firm that we've hired as our city engineer.
Yes.
So as a representative of that firm, if there is a better way to go about that, so there is a process improvement or cost, it would come from our city engineer. And in this case, and I'm, I'm not saying this in a negative derogatory way to you, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, moving forward, where do, where does this count? Where does this body look for those suggestions from, from our department heads? So we don't have to go through a discovery process to find out that there's a flaw after twenty-three, twenty-four years?
Well, I don't necessarily agree that it's a flaw, but that's going to be a.
Our best practice.
Best practice. And so what I think we're trying to talk about that is, is if you want to talk about some changes to the process, and I, I learned that in my letter, I would very much like to be part of that, because I think that I have a lot of institutional knowledge of the city and about how the work's been done in the city. I have a lot of institutional knowledge about your infrastructure and what needs to be done. I mean, there was a time in the city where the streets were in terrible condition and no, no work, no money was being budgeted to get that work done. And they were continuously going, falling into disrepair. And over time, the, you know, the city council and the administrations changed that and modified their process. And now you put in a healthy amount of money to try to get that done. And I have some information to share that's going to show that you are making huge progress in improving that. And you can drive around the city and you can see that, that you're making progress. So I would be, I would be happy to do, help the city and talk about that process and try to come up with some improvements to the process so that it can be more transparent, if that's the word you're, you know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
Sure.
Something that everybody is more comfortable with. Because our goal is to continue to do work in the city and help you, you know, meet your project needs and get things done in a timely fashion so that your residents and your businesses can succeed here. And so I think we've done, done that, and I think we've accomplished a lot of that. But if we need to change the process, it's our, it's our job, and our firm's job to modify our process to work within the framework that you want. It's absolutely incumbent on, upon us to do that.
And, and that last part is, is kind of where I was, I was hoping you'd go. It's, it's the city engineer's responsibility and obligation to the city to come as an independent body, not as, or, or as part of city staff, not as an independent body, to say, you can and you should entertain looking at what we're currently doing and try to, maybe try to get out of, in front of it a year and maybe, there are a lot of things that we were talking about that you were like, yeah, that'd be cool. And, and you know, you should do that and, and I would.
It would make our, it would make the design process easier and a lot of things happen if we weren't trying to crash to get them done.
Right.
To get them out to bid so that we can meet that bidding schedule. So lots, lots of ideas are going through my head. And so obviously I think that's probably step two. But I'm, as I said, I'm more than willing to, to help with that. And it's not just me. I have other resources and other people that have a lot of good ideas at our firm.
I would, I would just suggest that as, as, as you're sitting there now representing the city, not representing Ruger Milky, because you're under contract to represent the city, that's what I would expect whoever sits in that seat to do at any time. And I appreciate the fact that you're, you're, you're engaged and you're, and you're willing to do that now.
Absolutely.
Did you have, you have anything to add to that, Stan?
Well, unless you want me to go through the various components of how Rooker and Milky works with other municipalities. It goes the gambit. What they do for Racine Water and Sewer Utility is exactly what they do here. They, they need people to, when they pick up the phone, we need this done. And they go out and they do it. And if there's a project, it's done exactly the way it is here.
Racine Utility Stan has them as their.
Sewer and Water Utility.
And Ruger Milky is their.
Yes.
Contracted city engineer?
They're the engineer for the utilities, not the city engineer.
Okay, so they're.
An internal city engineer.
Right. So there's an internal city engineer though that would help and monitor.
Doesn't really pay any attention to sewer and water at all.
And they also, so you're saying an R and M also does the design for those projects?
All the design, all of the construction management, all of the inspection.
Well, what, what they.
Now, but the flip side is in Pewaki, so I want you to be able to juxtapose.
Let him explain what's.
In Pewaki, from nineteen eighty-eight until, I'm sorry, nineteen seventy-eight until around two thousand, big growth spurt. Rooker Milky handled it exactly as they do here. And then they got an in-house engineer. And from that point forward, they put in a process that is exactly what you're talking about doing now. So as I see it, if you amalgamate that, there are times when he needs to pick up the phone and say, hey, I need somebody out there now from, with expertise more than we have in-house. In my mind, that's what the city engineer would do under just a general contract. But if you get into specific projects, specific contracts, I think that's the best, best of both worlds. And it, it really would help, you know, give the flexibility to your department heads in sewer, water, and, and roads to, to be able to have that as a city engineer. So that's my feeling is the best way to approach it.
Derek, you had, you had your hand up? Okay, Tom, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to move my lips because they're frozen. Stan?
What's Stan?
Yeah.
This one or that one?
Either one of the Stans. That'd be perfect, because you're, you're asking a kind of a question. Do you do business with Maguano and Muskigo?
I did. Kind of Maguano I do.
I mean, Ruger Milky.
Yes, we do work with Maguano, town and village, but we, we don't do a lot of work with Muskigo.
And have you done, you've done in the past Muskigo?
It's been quite a while, but it's quite a while.
Oh, what the hell?
They hired, they hired the.
Yeah, and they went in-house attorney as well.
Uh-oh. I guess I have to rock stands that way, huh, Mike?
Coincidence?
Did you, did you remember what you were going to say?
I was just thinking out loud here, I think I'll say, I think we should do what we feel is best for us.
Yeah.
In our situation. I mean, it's good to have what other people do, but I think we should decide what's, what's best for us. And I think we flushed out a lot of good ideas for you as well. I think, I think we should continue the discussion and take some of these ideas and put them on paper so we can talk about it.
I think Sarah's done some of that, but we still have one more year to go through. But did you have something else?
Just, I can save this to the end or whatever. I don't care. This is pretty, I think to, to kind of piggyback on what Lou was talking about with regard to what our city engineer we expect to do. Do you also, Stan, do you work with our, our group on the RFPs?
No.
You don't, because, because your firm bids on them, you probably can't do that.
I don't see them till.
So, so that, obviously, I think that created some of the inefficiencies here, because I think if we had a separate city engineer, no offense to you, Stan, at all. But if we had a, a separate city engineer looking at that process and we had these variances year after year, I think that somebody that maybe wasn't bidding on it also would have said, eh, let's, you know, we need to try to correct that situation somehow. Either try to get better numbers out there or do what we're doing now where we put the numbers in the contract.
Isn't our assistant city engineer and then, or city, or DPW, your assistant, isn't he a engineer now? Yeah, and so we, we do have one on staff. I'm not sure how much is used in.
Using for the street projects and stuff and the RFPs.
That's, that's not a bad idea is to have an engineer that we have on staff.
Help craft his RFPs to create some of those efficiencies.
And I don't know if that'll help at all, but it can't hurt.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know, Stan, if you did the RFPs, so I, I figured you didn't, because that, you know, if your guys are bidding on them, that wouldn't make sense. Okay. That's it. Now, are we going to do eighteen here? Real quick, because you brought up a good point, and that's, that was one of the points, that, that conflict of interest. Potentially, and, and I'm not saying that there is, again, any, you could, you could work for, as an example Staples, and be in charge of procurement for all of our office supplies, and that would be similar. Whoever works for the third-party entity shouldn't oversee the third-party entity as they represent the city in that department head slot.
And I haven't been overseeing that, any of the projects.
But there, then there's that disconnect, right? Potentially.
City has other staff that are handling the projects. I mean, I'm not, I'm not approving or contractors' payments or any of those things. The city's doing that. So I'm, I'm operating separately from that. So I would say I have no conflict because I think the city attorneys answered that question, that this arrangement is not uncommon. So I, I'm not the one to answer that question. He is.
It, it, again, it may not be uncommon, but it seems to evolve toward a, a, a different path eventually. And, and I think that's where we're at today. So I get it.
Any other questions on seven? Let's move to eighteen. That's the last year.
Oh, eighteen?
Yeah.
So with eighteen, this was the street project where we did assign the construction management hours. The design RFP, well, let me back up. There were three firms that responded to the RFP. We did open up the cost envelopes and information on two of them, Ruger Milky and CBS Squared was the company. Because we did provide them the construction management numbers. There were, there was only a ten-hour difference between them. I didn't look to see which one messed up, you know, the ten hours. But the design numbers from CBS Squared were six hundred and thirty-eight versus Ruger Milky at three hundred and ninety-seven, at a cost of forty-six thousand on the design RFP. Our actual cost came in at forty-eight thousand eight seventy-two. Plus, we had an invoice for out of scope work of seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The out of scope work that was brought in was the North Lapham Street by the bridge. You may recall earlier this year, we talked about the potential of opening up that bridge and having it operate as a one-lane bridge, and we needed stacking area. So we had started that process of, of getting that laid out and have that in the bid. We were looking at moving ahead with the, with that bridge project, because there was going to be some significant work up by the bridge for a water main crossing, and we knew that was the time to, to go in and get that done. We added in the Chafee Road DPW storage yard. This was a project that was, I would think, most of the way designed, but not yet permitted through the DNR. We had the Woodland Lane storm sewer replacement. A situation came up where we have a storm sewer on Woodland Lane that runs right next to a house. It goes from the street back to the lake. It's an older corrugated pipe. It was giving way. We'd been in the yard a couple times and fixed some holes in it. Property was up for sale. The potential buyers wanted approval for the ability, ability to put a garage onto their parcel. So we were working with them, and we knew that we needed to get in there and get that pipe changed out regardless. So we, we did put that project in. Greenland Avenue Repair, too bad. Oliver and Spielberg's gone, because this is the spot right in front of her house that needed some work on that. The other add was for the utilities was thirty-three thousand five hundred and forty-three. They added in for the St. Paul and Pleasant Street lighting project, Cherry and Harding Water Main. Both Cherry and Harding were already designed in previous years, and we were bidding them out. The water main was planned on staying in place, but issues and concerns with the lead laterals, they opted to replace that water main. So then we had to redesign where the storm sewer was, because the water main was going where the new storm sewer design was. The Lapham Street Water Main Crossing, I had talked about that. And then also, uh, Petunia Street. They, you know, needed to get in there. I think they had, what, two or three water main breaks in a, three, three water main breaks in a one-block section. So, it was just one of those projects that, you know, you just need to get in there and get that done. So, that's what was added into it. Construction Management RFP was two hundred and sixteen thousand. Our actual to date is three hundred and thirty. Uh, the, uh, construction was, uh, estimated at twenty-one weeks. This was the numbers that we provided, um, at the two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight hours. The actuals, you know, through the work done, um, in twenty eighteen was twenty-four weeks. Uh, the, uh, contract project length figured twenty-four weeks in twenty eighteen and sixteen weeks in twenty nineteen. The, um, items that we added to the process, you know, that were added after the RFP was approved, and the work got done on the design part of it, and it was included in the construction award that came to council, uh, was the North Lapham Street work that we had talked about, Chafee Road, DPW Storage Yard, the Woodland Lane, Bio-retention repairs by the library, Greenland Avenue. Uh, the big item was we added six thousand lineal feet of street to be pulverized and overlaid, because we'd, uh, uh, received such a great number. There was some miscellaneous sanitary sewer rehab work, uh, the Saint Paul and Pleasant Street street lighting, Cherry and Harding Water Main replacement, Lapham Street Water Main, and a hydrant on Summit and Thackeray. So, that was work that came in after the RFP, but was in the construction bed. And then also in the project, we had that were added by change order. I'd come back to the council. In the bed, we were looking at just doing some binder patching and then surfacing Old School House Road. When we got out there, uh, the binder was just too far gone, so we came back and, and got approval for the expense of doing that. The small parking lot right across the street, uh, was in there. And then we also had our issue on Worthington Street by the railroad tracks where the semis were getting hung up, so we had to get in there and take care of that. And then projects that were added during the construction, uh, Harding Street, which is up off of Cherry. It sits up by the park. Uh, one of the things when we were working that area up there and, and, uh, comments from the residents that it was too narrow of a street. And we also had an issue coming up of ADA access into our park that's up there. So we ended up, uh, adding sidewalk across the street and did a mid-block crossing, which would allow for pedestrians to come down Cherry Street and then turn it up Harding, and then, uh, make their way into the park using a mid-block ADA crossing. And then, uh, you know, one of my favorite things was the archaeological investigation over here on Pleasant Street. Found out that it used to be a cemetery.
Where? Right over here.
Yeah, no, I.
Right in front of Derek's house.
Really?
Now we know where Derek has his body.
Yeah, so we're Pleasant Street, where it goes up between Walnut and Fowler. That was kind of in the middle, so it extended further past. We weren't overly concerned, because we already had sanitary sewer and water in the street, it'd already been constructed. I thought it was kind of a myth myself, because I had never heard that in all my years working here. We walked into the public information meeting, and the first person that walks in says, yeah, we live by the, we live on the cemetery land. You know, so.
The house is east of the project?
Pardon?
The area east of the pro- that new project you're talking about?
So the, the one block stretch that we're doing on the other side of Fowler? That, um, we weren't able to start that work until we went through a lot of archaeological investigative work. We had to pay to have someone on site during all excavations.
Did they find anything?
No.
I wonder what happened when they did the Meterview School and the church? If, same, same type scenario, they thought that was a burial ground.
Pabst Farms was a huge one.
Pabst Farms was a big issue.
Yeah.
That, we know though, is an issue, because that's always been an issue.
I don't have a lot of questions about eighteen, but, um, basically, I just, uh, I'm, I'm curious. We, we still have a two thousand nineteen phase that's almost completed, it looks like, April to July. Where we are seven, I, I appreciate us trying to estimate it, but we had the, a significant addition. So I, like I said before, eighteen seems like an outlier to me. Do we have an idea how much more design, construction management work we're anticipating? Or are we done with design and it's just construction management moving forward? I mean, we're already a hundred fourteen over, so do we expect another hundred?
Yeah, I, I would think that it could be in that area. Uh, so you're, you're correct in that all of the design work is done. So all the streets that we added in, all that extra work, that's already been completed. So right now, we're only working on the Saint Paul and Pleasant Street. And, uh, the majority of that is, uh, is a TIF expense and, and is in part of the levy. Which is, are the numbers that we come, with the exception of the one block that we were talking about, between Walnut and Fowler. That's part of the levy.
When, when that project is finally completed, one of the action items I had listed was that we have a final report on that eighteen project and how far off we were or not. Yeah, obviously, we're already off, but I'm, I'm curious, are we gonna be two hundred and fourteen, three hundred and fourteen, you know, on that side of things? And how far off we were on the design in that project, um, based on where we're at? Because it looks like we still have about four hundred thousand dollars worth of work to do. We've got five payments done to date. We, the total bid was four million, a little over four million, we've done about six, three point six.
Three point six, and the adjusted, yeah, it's closer to four point five is what the.
Oh, it is adjusted.
Construction contract expected to come in at, based on the change orders that have taken place.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other questions on?
Real quick, on, on the, the, were there two projects on Chafee Road? Pardon? There were two projects on Chafee Road?
No, just the storage yard.
Well, you mentioned it twice, that's right. Whether the other road was done the year before or something like that. Town of Conwalk there.
Redlin, Redlin Road, when we resurfaced that, that was earlier on. Oh, the Town of Conwalk did, did the street, that, that's actually their street. We did participate in that.
Didn't have to, though, did we?
That was on the south side of the tracks?
We didn't have to, but, uh.
Because I lived out there, because it was such a rotten road.
Yeah.
The other half of Redlin Road, that was part of the Town of Conwalk too that we did. Did we ever get paid for that one on Redlin?
We, no, anything that, that was in theirs, any, anything that was in theirs on Redlin, they took care of a hundred percent. And actually, when they did, uh, overbuy the storage yard by the intersection there, they came a couple hundred feet into the city and, and they had covered that cost. They didn't reach out for a, for a cost share on that.
On the, the one we just did on Redlin, going south, where they, they had a spot there, that's, you, you told me one time that's on the city, but there's four or five houses that are in the Town of Conwalk there.
So, Redlin, when it comes off of Allen, that first stretch, and I, was there, you know, seven, eight homes right through there? And you come through that wooded area, that's right where the, uh, city-town line is. And then the rest of Redlin Road, all the way up to the storage yard, um, is in the town. There's a short stretch alongside the storage yard, reverts back to the town from the intersection up to the railroad tracks. And then from the railroad tracks going north to Marx is a hundred percent city.
They paid from the Town of Conwalk to do that, or the Redlin, that's what I'm asking.
No, they, you know, so all that work that took place on Redlin last year, to resurface all that, that was a hundred percent town.
How do you plow that road if it's part ours, then part theirs, or just, just someone plowed the whole thing?
So, you know, one of the things that, you know.
The Town of Concord and the other half, you just.
Yeah, it's like, that's such a.
When, when I became the Director of Public Works, I left it up to our s- street superintendent to work with the street superintendent and the, uh, neighboring communities. I said, you guys work it out, because if you get me involved, it'll be messed up.
Yeah, because you got three different communities.
So, it's, it's generally a who gets there first.
Okay, good. Any other questions, go ahead.
No, not on eighteen, I, I, just a few more general comments, and I, I think we've, we've done a lot. One of the things I heard said through my notes here was that, Mr. Sugden, you do not oversee the street projects? Do you not oversee the street projects at all then? So I guess that's also new information for me, I didn't know that. So all of our street projects are only looked over by our city staff? Okay, by Mar- and do you have, and the engineer helping you out? Okay, so you have no connection to, so, so, one of the things I, one of my thoughts was, you know, this is like the person making the test, taking the test, grading the test, but if you're not touching the street projects at all, is there like a, a separation, like a Chinese wall? Do you know, I mean, or?
I think that's a legal term, I don't, uh, isn't that?
Yeah, Chinese.
Well, ask a lawyer.
Yeah.
A Chinese wall is where, you know, there's a, there is a conflict, and so there's a separation. So for instance, you don't, you don't help craft the RFPs, because your firm works on the RFP. That would be in the legal world, called the Chinese wall, you can call it whatever you want. There's a variety of different terms for it, but essentially, um, do you touch the street projects at all then? I mean, do you look at it? I mean, if, if there was a question, would you come and help?
I think, I mean, if there was some question that came up, but I, that's why I brought our, our engineers, engineering staff here, because if you had a question, a specific question about the project, I'm not gonna be able to answer it, because they're the ones who did the project. I, you know, it's more cost-effective to have them do that work and take care of that.
Right, okay.
What they've been doing. They work with city staff, utility staff, to deliver the project and get it done the best way. And then, and so I really have very little involvement.
So your interactions.
If something really, if you get a resonant problem that's really bad, maybe, then I would get involved. But for the most part, um, uh, very, very little, if, I mean, I want to say, you know, none, but I would say very, very little involvement on my part.
So one of the things that's always been stuck in my head, as we've, we've discovered, kind of some of these variances and that over the last, you know, several years, and it's taken us about six to eight months to get this information. One of the things I've always wondered is, i- i- you being our city engineer for as long as you have been, and Ruger Milky doing a lot of the street projects since at least two thousand eleven or before, why that doesn't create efficiencies, you know? I would think it would create efficiencies, not inefficiencies. You know, you would be able to say, you know, if we're doing that route, I remember we did, we did that over LA, or we, we did that sewer work twenty years ago or fifteen years ago, and that there's, it doesn't seem like there's institutional efficiencies, or am I wrong? Are there institutional efficiencies?
I believe there are, I, I was about to disagree with you.
That's okay, it happens once in a while.
I believe there are efficiencies. Um, one, um, our staff are used to, um, they can anticipate what I think the city wants in the design. Our bidding documents, we have created those over time. Ernie Riffle mentioned, um, the EGCC documents and how those are standardized. And so we, um, are able to, we've also, also over the years overseen the city standard specifications. So there's, the city, when I started working here, we didn't have any standards. So, we've worked with city staff and utility staff to, to create those standards and, uh, water, wastewater. So we have a document that has all the city standards in it. So we are familiar with that and familiar with what the city wants, and so that does, um, generate some efficiencies.
So, um, were you aware of the, the variances over the years in the construction management design part? Were you aware of that at all?
I was.
Generally?
Yes.
If, uh, let's say hypothetically, we had somebody, let's say just a random other engineers or city engineer, or let's say you saw that happening in another community, is that something that should get fixed? I mean, do you believe that's something that we can fix? I mean, can we fix this, this, these variance issues?
Yes, I think that's some of the things we were talking about, is what are some, what are some processes you can put in place so that, um, you can reduce the amount of unknowns that people are, are, you know, providing a proposal on? And so, right now, there's a lot of variables on this, you know, on the very front end. There's nothing to define. If I handed you a piece of paper and said, here, you know, figure out what this is all gonna be, and how much is it gonna cost? And also, by the way, how long is it gonna take to construct it? And what is it gonna be, what is gonna be constructed? There's a lot of unknowns there, a lot of variables that nobody can, can anticipate. And so, some of the things that we've talked about tonight would eliminate those variables. And I think the, the perfect example you gave was, I don't like to compare engineering to construction, but I guess I'm going to, is pointed out that the bids that the city put out for construction, um, came in, uh, very close to the amount that was bid, because it was a very defined project. And I, and I, I think there's a stack of them sitting over in the engineering department, of all the project plans and all the bidding documents. And if you look at the level of detail that goes into that, and you hand that to somebody versus one piece of paper that says, here, figure this out, there's a, there's a tremendous amount of effort and detail that goes into that, and that's what the contractor's bidding on. And I, I would, I would love to sit down and show you what that contractor's getting.
I'll go read all those tonight real quick.
They're exciting, at least to me.
I'm sure they're exciting.
So, I don't know if that, that's a long-winded answer, but, um.
Yeah, and I, you look, I don't, I, I think some of the characterizations with that was that there was overages, and you put in your letter, you know, overages. I'm calling it variances, because I think that's probably a more accurate term, you know, variance from the RFP to where we ended up. I, I think from the outside looking in, it looks like overages. I've actually looked at the bills, and it's not just, what I was afraid of when I asked for that, that I was just gonna get an invoice that says twenty thousand dollars, and that we didn't get that. So that's good, I, I have outlined of, of ours and who was doing it. And one of my other comments, uh, that I actually made to the paper was, are we getting honest reporting? And it wasn't, that wasn't a, that wasn't, is someone being dishonest? It's, do we, do we know? And now that I know that the city, it sounds like the management project wasn't reporting to you at all. They were, so if they weren't reporting to you, they were reporting to our city staff, not to you.
Right.
Okay. And so that defines where, you know, the hangup is and why these variances are occurring and trying to fix them. I do think that a, I would hope that in the future, when these things come up, or we start seeing these trends, someone needs to recognize the trends. And when I look at that spreadsheet, wherever that big spreadsheet is, when I look at that spreadsheet, we, we gotta figure out why that's happening. And, and maybe, maybe in our heads, as we're doing the project in the city, we say, oh, well, that's because of this and this and this. But, uh, from the outsider looking in, and, and as an alderman who maybe doesn't do, you know, I don't do this kind of work on a regular basis, I see significant variances. And what can we do to bring that down, or make those variances either less apparent, or we budget it in, because we're, we're estimating better, so.
Appreciate you using the word, uh, variance. That's, that's what they are, they're things that change, that's, that things, there's a.
Yeah, and, and that, that, that doesn't mean that I agree or appreciate all the billing, because I do, one of the things we had talked about was, you know, some guy leaves, we get a new guy, yeah, the project goes in the next year, but then you bill for the new guy who's more expensive per hour. I mean, there's certain, I mean, with the amount of money that we write in a check every year to Ruger Milky, it would seem that once in a while, that something like that, you would be, look, look, that dude left, went somewhere else. We're, we're replacing with this guy, he's more pricey per hour, we're gonna eat that difference, because you wrote us four million dollars in the last five years. So, I, I mean, something we do, I do, you know, hey, look, I couldn't get the associate out to that, I'm gonna do it. I'm an extra hundred bucks an hour or whatever.
I didn't bring the amount of money that we write off and.
Right, I understand. No, I, I, I get you, but that's one of the things that, that kind of irked me, and it, it does. You know, because it's, uh, it's one of those things where, you know, it, it flashed my red flag, you know, on that situation. So I appreciate you guys coming in tonight. I will take you up on the offer to come look at the bid documents at some point.
So, uh, one of the things I've asked for, and maybe the, one of the reasons I asked for all this information, was because I wanted to separate, um, design from construction firms being selected. Because you guys declined to just take the design part of it, is the reason I asked for the information, okay? And in the future, it sounds like maybe we will be doing design bids only, and then doing construction management separately.
It all depends on how the process works out.
But that's what we're talking about doing, is doing the design first, and, and then doing the construction management later. So what, I guess what I'm saying is, um, you kind of brought this on yourself, because you declined to, to take just the design part of that contract. That's when I asked for the information, and that's what brought this on, so. I'm just saying, in the future, you might have to only do the design part of it, and I'm hoping that you'd be okay with that. Does that make sense?
Or the construction management side.
Or the construction management side.
I look at it this way, we'll take bids from, from whoever the most qualified.
And we must.
And we must, take the bids from the most qualified bidders.
But we were discussing the RFP process, I'm s-
I understand that, but if we split the design into one RFP, the construction management into one RFP, we send it out to whoever gets it, and we accept, or we evaluate the highest qualified, lowest-cost bidder. If it's the same company, it's the same company.
I don't know that that's your decision, I think that's our decision.
If it's two different companies, I understand, it is your decision.
Right, but you're telling us how it's gonna happen, and I'm saying, we get to, this is an open book discussion. We're gonna bid it, right, but we might make up a policy that one firm can't do both.
Well.
I know you don't want to do it, but, but we have, the council has the option to do that.
They have the option to do it, but I think it's, 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 you're limiting your, um, your options as a, as a council, and you're limiting the ability of the taxpayers to get the best product.
And that's your opinion?
Well, look, Mayor, I, in, in all due respect, did you look at the spreadsheet?
Yeah.
I mean, we have significant variances over five years that have amounted to five hundred thousand dollars. We're already, there, there's a problem there, whatever it is. And if, if, if the RFPs were done right to begin with, perhaps there wouldn't be the variances, and we wouldn't be talking about it. If the, the construction management wasn't as high as it was, um, we wouldn't be talking about it. So we, we already are faced with a problem, so we're trying to fix that. And we, we think one of the ways to do that is to split up the design and the, and it might mean.
Some of us do.
Some of you, some of you do, and we'll have to see how that works out.
And, and I, I think to, to foreclose that early on, I think it needs to be part of the discussion. I'm not opposed to any kind of solution, I mean, maybe we, we bid it both ways. You bid a design and construction management, and then you split it, you know, you do bid it both ways. I don't know how we.
I think the idea, but we'll have to come up with the idea. Well, I think what we have is, we have some ideas that have been written down, and I don't know if we want to go through them now.
I can recap those, just briefly what I heard.
Just recap them now and then we'll set up another meeting to go through the process of how we're going to get this thing done.
These are things that I heard as far as what we want to do moving forward, so looking at the timeline change, so designing a year ahead of construction, so I think that we'll see too come out when we get to long-term financial plan and stuff too, because we'll be able to see how that impacts and everything, so that's one thing. With that then, is the process of the design and the construction management, because you'd be designing in one year, construction management in another, and we can have that discussion about.
But also considering sending construction bid out before we do the construction management?
Yep, yep, I wrote that down too, I've got the process there being, look at, design RFP, construction, have the construction company provide us the schedule and then do the construction management RFP. Let's see, contracts for professional services and consideration of how we ask for pricing from our contracts, the not-to-exceed concept, let's see here, what do I have? And then, just like the communication piece, how do we report back, how do we get that information back to the council? So those are the, kind of the concepts that I had captured from the discussion, so like Mayor said, I can, we can go back and kind of put together kind of a policy-type thing for, for us to, to talk about again at another meeting.
Yeah, there's a few we're missing.
Okay.
One of the things we talked about early on was, you said that we were upgrading, but we, as a council, I think, at least as me, alderman, my other alderman from District Three, would like a report back on where we're at on managing the accounting so that we get proper reporting on the projects.
I kind of lumped that under communication.
Okay, that's under communication, and I, I believe that communication with council and staff is part of our strategic plan, and I, I think it's something that we should definitely push forward because I think that's part of what happened with this whole project and this whole process, is it took a long time to get the information and frankly, in my notes from this morning when I was going through some of this stuff is, you know, we've been asking about the low bids and the same company getting the work year after year after year since I've been here in fourteen, and I, I, what I'd hoped, what, what somebody would have said at some point is just lifted up their hand and said, we should look at this variance and we should look at what we're doing and try to maybe streamline this process and create efficiencies over the five years I've been working here, and that didn't happen and hasn't happened until we press this, and I do think this is part of our job and we're doing what we're supposed to do, and I hope that we get this fixed in the next six months, eight months, you know, by the next process.
It'll have to be fixed before budget process.
Yeah.
And that, and I, I think that's important, I think one more thing you have to add into your list of things is, if a decision is made to, to split the design, the construction management and the construction bid itself, when do we have to have the design done and how do we budget that? So the timing has to be there because we are either going to have more one year and, and then be on a level scale or else we're going to skip a year.
Yeah, and that's what, we got to look at that with the budget, and how, how do we transition?
How do you transition to this new model?
Yep.
Go ahead, Stan.
And, and Mayor, if I can, being somewhat familiar with the actual boots on the ground of this stuff, I would hope that you would allow staff and the department heads to provide pros and cons with regard to each suggestion. One thing that comes to mind, if you're going to get your actual bids for construction back, well, the first thing you do is you get together, and you need a construction manager to have your initial meeting, and if you're going to have a six or eight or twelve-week gap between then and the time you got your construction manager in place, that's really not going to work very well if you want to get started, otherwise you're going to have to, anyway, just little things like that, I think.
The details will have to work out.
The boots on the ground will be good to give you that information.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll have to work out the details, the thing, we have to have this by this point, if you want to start construct, when do you start construction, April, May? They have to go backwards from there of, of how do you, when do you have to do each of these things for design, the construction bid, the whole thing, and when do you have to have it finished or when do you have to start it?
Right, right.
I also.
For me, I always work backwards. Go ahead, Lou.
You want to, can he go in and then I'll go?
Go ahead.
I also want to make sure that we're applying for this, this funding.
I agree.
Yep.
It will play a part in how we bid things, it definitely will be.
I do have that written down, thank you, Derek.
About when we find out when we get it, if we get it.
Well, Mark, when we got the contract in two thousand and fourteen, did we submit that or did, who submitted, did you submit that? You submitted it?
Yeah.
Okay, so the process has changed, so you should do your homework on that and find out how that has to work, so. I got, I got the policy right here for you, so.
Why don't you fill it out, Derek? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello? Do it. One of the things I had down was the qualified bid process, the questions that are, are associated with that, that would maybe flush out the past financial performance.
Okay, okay.
And then I think we're doing concluding statements kind of, so I, I just wanted to thank Alderman Zwort and Alderman Rozick along with the rest of this body in getting this flushed out. Rozick and Zwort definitely took the lead and, and knew the questions to ask based on their background, and I think it's, it's going to provide a better process, and with that in mind, the way that I see it, you were following process that was in place, and that's the way we've been operating for quite some time, and it's time to evolve and change how we're doing it, and it sounds like we're not the first community to evolve that process, and I think we're going to be better off for it, so I, I do think we're doing our job, I appreciate the fact that we're having this conversation in this chamber and that it is going to be viewable to anybody in the public and it's much more visual for anybody to go back and, and reference, so I appreciate that, Mayor, because it didn't have to be in this room. And the way that we do business moving forward doesn't have to be the same that it was in the past just because that's what we did in the past, and that was kind of the answer that we got for, for a long time, so I look forward to seeing what flushes out and I appreciate everybody's time on it.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Stan.
Good, Mayor, I just would like to hand out this flyer. The street ratings that have, over time, the investment. So it wasn't all, you know, going in and out, I just want to.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Stan.
Thanks.
Two things, we're going to have to schedule another committee, committee of the whole meeting after they get some of this information done, we'll do it sometime after the fourth, but we do have to get back together again to go through the recommendations, come up with a policy, and bring it to council for a vote. The second thing is, I, I do want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I think this was a very, very productive meeting, I think we got all the information out that we wanted to get out, and everybody was respectful and I really appreciate it to have a good quality discussion, I think it's, I think it was very appropriate, so, thanks, everybody.